All right, call the meeting to order. Grace Lesbrunns, Cascade Supervisor. Click Slater, please call the roll. Trusty Kessel.
Here.
Treasure Pierce.
Here.
Trusty Shipley.
Present.
Trusty Nordhook.
Here.
Trusty McDonald.
Here.
Supervisor Lesbrunns.
Here.
Slater, here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and endless. I can't see the agenda right now on the computer, but.
Is it just blank?
There is. Oh, thank you. There is. Article three, is there an approved motion or discussion? To approve the agenda?
We go approve the agenda.
It's part.
It's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee McDonald. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Article four, fiscal year 2023 Township Board Budget Workshop. Mantra Sway, let's walk us through and then we can ask questions or have comments as you go.
Great, yeah, I appreciate it. So this time, the year always comes faster than I anticipate, but I appreciate you guys making time today to attend the first of two scheduled budget workshops. So I've put together a presentation to again to go through all of the funds. At the end, there is some discussion that we need to have regarding two of the budgets that didn't appear in this first draft. That is the Fire Station Construction Fund and then discussion about our ARPA funds as well, and those are kind of interrelated. So plan is to, like Supervisor Lesbrunns said, kind of do a review, have a nice robust discussion about what you guys like or don't like in the budget. Again, have that discussion at the end, and then we have another one of these meetings scheduled a week from today, same time, same place, to kind of review the final, final. Before then, we go to the board meeting and have our public hearing with the budget. So with that, we're going to get underway. Real kind of informal, please just stop me at any point if you have questions, if I'm going too fast, and if I'm going too slow, you can give me the, the, speed it up, but we will get started. So. First, we're going to spend a significant time talking about our general fund, and our general fund covers essentially all of the departments that are typically funded through tax dollars. And so the general fund, the general millage tax dollars, that includes our township board, our supervisor manager department, the clerk treasurer assessing elections, building and grounds, cemetery administrative drains, roads, yardways, so on and so forth. You can read it there. And then we also assist other funds through transfers. So there's three different funds that we have transfers that go into, and we'll talk about that a little bit as well. And then.
Can you lower your mic just a little bit? It's echoing.
For some reason, the podium mic wasn't working. Is that better?
Yep.
All right. And then even though the general fund entails activities that are generally funded through tax dollars, there's also departments that have associated fee revenue as well. You'll see that in the revenue section. So with that, we're going to get into our general fund revenues. So our millage rate, which equals $1 per $1,000 of taxable value on property in the township. This year is 0.9588. So that was originally authorized way back when the township became a township at 1.100, and has been slowly rolled back due to our headly rate cap. And again, the headly rate cap is a, is a way that the taxable values and tax collection in the state of Michigan has been designed really to ensure that the tax collections in the township for existing property don't outpace the rate of inflation. So we did have a headly rollback in 2023, real minor, and now our millage rate is set to be 0.9588. And then for our fiscal year 2022 values, and again, just a reminder that our fiscal year 2022 values fund our fiscal year 2023 budget. Just there's a little bit confusion there sometimes, but our ad valorem, that is estate equalized value, which is essentially half of the cash value of all the property in the township, is $2.2 billion. And then our taxable value, again, which is also affected by the headly rollback, is $1.8 billion and change. There's a difference there of $400 million, $400 million, which is actually a good sized city. When I was the manager in the city of Mylan, our entire taxable value was less than $300,000. So that gap between our SEV and taxable value continues to grow, and it'll grow a lot next year when the SEV, the CPI is scheduled to go up 7.9%, but our taxable value raises are only capped at 5%. So. That will continue to grow a good deal for the residents. So look at our real and personal property revenues. This is, if you're following along on the budget, this is a couple of the first couple of lines in the budget, the general property taxes and the personal property tax. And you can see we have a nice, smooth graph upward. In 2022, we were just short, just above 1.6 million, and in 2023, we'll be just above $1.7 million. So a nice increase there. And then looking at our revenue sharing, this looks a little bit different than it has in the past because of the effects of the 2020 census. So you can see 2021 was the last full year where our revenue reflected the 2010 census numbers. And then 2022, not only does our state revenue sharing go up because of the new census numbers, but we also get a retro payment all the way back to April of 2020 for what we would have gotten paid out had those numbers been in place immediately. So that's where the bump comes up in 2022. Now in 2023, at normals, it'll be the first full year of the 2020 census with the revenue sharing without any retro payment in it. So.
And revenue sharing in plain English means what, Ben?
So the state of Michigan doesn't allow a local option income tax instead of part of the income tax we pay, or not income tax, sorry, sales tax. Instead, part of the sales tax we pay on everything that we buy or most things we buy, part of it goes to the state, and then part of it comes back to local units of government through a constitutional formula. And then there's a little extra that comes back through a statutory formula as well. We get a real minute amount of statutory revenue sharing, almost all of ours is constitutional. And then you have our overall general fund revenues. Again, in 2022, saw a spike up to just over $6 million. A lot of that was accounted for in those retro payments that came from the state for our revenue sharing. And then 2023, we're anticipating $5.9 million in general fund revenues. So looking at the line items of note in the general fund, again, talked about general property taxes. Our real property tax revenues are up 5.86%. That number is important when we get to the wage discussion because our wage increases are based partly on that number. Our personal property tax revenues continue to go down, but this is gonna, this downward pressure is going to stop soon, right? So. Personal property tax reform was completed in 2013. Actually, it was completed in 2015, but it was retroactive back to 2013. And there was this 10-year roll-in period for industrial personal property to eventually fall off the industrial personal property rules and become exempt. So this upcoming year is the 10th year of that, and then going forward, we should really only see personal property tax revenues go up slightly as large commercial and in utility, personal property is still subject to personal property tax. To offset that, we do get what's called the community stabilization share. So essentially, for all of the businesses in the entire state that are exempt from personal property, they pay a separate tax to the state, and the state then refunds us based on our 2013 personal property rule numbers. So this number continues to creep up as the personal property tax number continues to creep down. And our community stabilization share estimate for 2023 in the general fund is just short of $81,000. And you'll see as we get into each one of our tax funds, there's a similar line in there for the community stabilization share. So again, talked about state share revenue. So this is based on the state of Michigan Treasury estimate. They're really nice. Every year, they publish a document that has the estimated payments. We get bi-monthly payments for the state shared revenue. And again, we talked about the census update that was applied mid-year in 2022 that accounts for that little bump. So approximately $62,000 of our two-plus million dollars in revenue sharing is, it's called CVTRS, City Village Township Revenue Sharing. And so the replacement for, it's essentially statutory revenue sharing. So it's additional revenue sharing that comes from the state that isn't in the constitutional formula, or one of about only 100 townships that gets amount, gets an amount, even though it's pretty small. So other revenue line items that I wanted to talk about, we had seen some years of decline in our cable revenue and peg fees. So that decline does seem to have leveled out. In fact, you saw a little, ended up with a little bit of an increase in 2022, even though we originally budgeted decrease. So hoping that will continue. I was anticipating quite a bit more decrease in our cable and peg fee revenue. But just to note, as I do every year, so we don't get revenue from internet service in the township. We only get revenue from cable service. So as people continue to cut the cord, as they say, and get rid of their cable to adopt other means of TV, that's where that revenue kind of disappears. But it seems like at least for this year, it's leveled out. So interest on investments coming into the past, the past year, all of our interest line items were really, really low as interest rates hit historic lows. We know that what that has done this past year, interest rates have climbed significantly. Because of that, we are budgeting quite a bit more in interest revenue in all of our funds. It's not quite pre-COVID levels yet, but it's getting close. So it is nice as we have these, these fund balances. There is an opportunity to make some money there, and Ken and his team does a really good job of balancing our liquid funds versus our essentially CD funds. So in places where we know that we're going to need the funds soon, we use a couple of different places to store money. But the two big ones are the class fund and the Kent County Pool, which are both very, very large liquid fund investment strategies. They both have billions and billions of dollars of revenue. But the interest rates there are creeping up again over 1% when they were down to what, 0.15 or something like that at one point. So that's where we keep our liquid funds. And then if we know that we're going to have the money for a while, Ken and Ockson do a good job of investing those in CDs, usually a year to two years to make sure that we have additional interest coming, coming from there. So election reimbursement, we do think that there is possibly a reimbursement for Caldonia election. There's also a possibility that we won't have to do a lot for that election at all because there's only one precinct in Cascade Township that is involved with the Caldonia School District. In the past, we've successfully combined precincts with another precinct in Caldonia. There's been some cost savings there. So Sue and her team will work through that and figure out what exactly they want to do. But if we do end up having to run a Caldonia School District election, that is a reimbursable election. Then we have some transfers that come in from some of our other funds. So we have a transfer from the DDA that covers half of the Economic Development DDA Director of wonderful B&amp;G employee. We have a transfer that comes in from the pathways. It covers one full B&amp;G employee. We have a transfer from the library that covers 0.75 of a full B&amp;G employee. That's essentially for grounds maintenance and setting up tearing down of the Wisner Center. We did reduce this, you know, it was 1.5, not in the 2022 budget, but in the 2021 budget. And then when we went to janitorial service here, instead of our B&amp;G doing it, we eliminated one of those, one of basically 0.75 transferred out of there. So and then we do have a new transfer line in this, in the end of this year, reimbursement for engineering. So as our township engineer continues to integrate himself into everything that's going on in the township, as he works in other funds, there's engineering line items in those funds, right? So there are some places where they may use our new consultant. There are some places where they may use Eric. If they use Eric, then that fund will pay basically his full cost of employment per hour back into the general fund to help cover some of that cost. So there'll be a little bit of money coming into the general fund from those other funds to help cover the cost of the township engineer. Are there any questions about the revenues or any other revenue line items?
What is miscellaneous income? 67, 671. It was $22,000 this year and next year for.
Yep, so there's a lot of things that go into that. You know, some of the basic things are when we collect permit fees for solicitation. When I send out FOIA bills, they come into there. They're a big amount this year, more than likely was an insurance reimbursement. So if we have something that we get insurance reimbursement for, it'll go, it'll go into that line item.
Okay.
Any other questions about our revenues? All right. So I say this every year, this graph is super busy, but I think it does a good job of showing that we spend a lot of our general fund money on a lot of different services to the township, but there aren't any, you know, there aren't any huge chunks, right? So the biggest chunk of this year is going to be our administrative chunk. It's just short of 15%, but we would expect that because that administrative chunk actually services a lot of the other departments in the township as well. So I do have a new slice of the pie this year, debt service. So we'll spend just shy of 7% of our general fund money on the debt service for the fire station, which is a good number. But we have, again, what I feel is some pretty equal distribution on how we spend our general fund money, which is always the sign of a fiscally healthy township.
Hey Ben, at the very top, the township board, 1.18%, then you've got supervisor manager, clerk and treasurer. Township board, is that just then the four elected trustees?
It is, yep. Any other questions about the graph? All right. So then we're going to get into some of our expenditures, and we will start with the township board. So as we go through each one of these departments, you're going to see the basically a similar format, talk about what the expenditures are in that department, any line items of note. Again, if I skip over something that you'd like me to address, just stop me and let me know. But starting out with the general fund township board for fiscal year 2023, we have just over $70,000 budgeted in this department. So this does cover the salaries for the four trustees. As Supervisor Lesbrunns mentioned, the supervisor, clerk and treasurer are all budgeted in their own departments as well. A big line item out of here is the township dues, which is 723000. We belong to the Grand Valley Metro Council, the Chamber of Commerce, the Employers Association, ASCAP, MyDeal. There's all sorts of organizations we belong to as the township, and the dues excuse me, come out of here. And then we do have money in here for educational opportunities for the trustees. So if there are conferences that you want to go to, classes that you want to take, there is money in here, both for those opportunities and for the mileage to get there and get back. So just remember that there's an opportunity to take advantage of that if there is anything that you want to go to.
What dues do we pay?
So we, there's a couple in there that are the Grand Valley Metro Council. So we have our general Grand Valley Metro Council dues. Then we have our transportation, Grand Valley Metro Council dues. Those are the two biggest ones. We join, we are in ASCAP, so it is a music licensing item. Basically, everybody, anybody that plays music for anything has to, has to join it. We fought that a couple of years ago to get out of it and.
Do we play music?
Like on hold.
No.
Yeah, if you have an event. So you know, if you have the Fourth of July event, if you're playing music there. Basically, if you do anything as a public member that involves any music, that's, they represent like 95% of the artists worldwide. You have to pay this fee. It's like 350 bucks.
We better be cranking music wherever we can and then to get our money.
Yeah, yeah, so.
What else besides the?
We're a member of the Grand Rapids Chamber of Commerce. We're a member of the Employers Association. We're a member of Mistig. We're a member of MyDeal. Thinking that's all of them.
How, the Grand Valley Metro Council, is that, do they tell us how much we have to pay to join or?
They do, yep.
How is that, everyone pays the same amount or how do they base that?
It's based on population, and the transportation one is, involves both population and road lane miles, I believe. But they believe the Metro Council Board sets that every four years.
And that gets us Regis?
So there's a separate, so we actually budget Regis separately in the administrative. That one's a lot more expensive. Regis is about $40,000 a year.
We have to have it. But then what do we, okay, I'm just questioning, how much is the general and the transportation that we pay to the Grand Valley Metro Council?
I don't have those exact numbers. I can, I can come up with that, and I'll bring it back to the next meeting.
And then would this also be the right place, what we give them every year or separate?
Nope, there's a separate line item for the right place.
Is that because it's voluntary or how is?
The right place is voluntary, yes.
We have to be a member of to get the Regis.
Yes.
Can you be just general or just transportation and get Regis?
I don't know.
Just to kind of figure out what we get out of it. Is there any municipality that's not in both in the area?
I do believe that there are a couple of the northern townships that aren't members of the Metro Council. But the last time I heard that would have been back in 2014, whenever Ada joined. So I don't know if they have joined since then. Any other questions about the township board apartment? All right. So we're going to move on to the general fund supervisor slash manager. So looking at 2023, looking at a budget here of just over $310,000, that's a little misleading, and I'll get into that here in a minute. So we do have three wage line items here. We have the wages full-time. That's for our illustrious management office assistant, Jessica. Then we have the department head. That was something that we did with the budget last year, where we parsed out the department heads in certain budgets. And then we have the wages part-time, which is the township supervisor. So in here right now, we have this line item, which is assignable salary. And as we get into the merit-based raises, we talk about that. This is just a line item to make sure that the amount that will be given out for merit-based raises is somewhere in the budget, so we don't have to add it in later. But as those reviews are done and those recommendations are made, those are, that's then parsed out and then put into the wage line items for those individual employees. So when the budget's actually approved, that assignable salary is then zero, and those numbers are parsed out to other employees. So we got an education line item here, conferences and seminars for the manager and supervisor. And this line, this budget does have a special projects line, and this one is specifically for the strategic plan implementation. So we signed a contract with McKenna, and they are coming to help us out with implementing our strategic plan.
Hey Ben, the wages full-time, 702000, it's not critical, but I just don't see it on.
You gotta skip back. It's the bottom of page two.
Oh, okay, thank you. Oh, got it.
Any questions?
Yeah, Timmy asked it this morning, but I'll ask it. Can you share what's in the special projects budget?
Yeah, so that was the last one I just talked about. It's for this department. It is the McKenna leading the Strategic Plan Implementation Committee. The board approved that contract with them back in October. But as we get through each department, there are special project line items for a bunch of different departments. So as we get to each one, I'll explain what's in each one of those lines.
What, why wasn't there any for 22? McKenna being 22 to also.
Yeah, I'll have to look at that.
Are they, are we anticipating them doing more work than?
McKenna?
Yeah, it seems like it'd be lighter because this is just kind of implementation committee.
So the agreement that we signed was, so the base was $1,000 a month. That was generally for the report, but then there is money added on for coming to meetings and that kind of stuff. So I baked in the $10,000 or the $12,000 for the report each month, plus an extra $6,000 for the extra stuff.
I see. You're having the same question I do. There's another thing for 22, so you could better tie that together.
Yeah.
Just like to clarify it more in the budget, where instead of just special projects, have special projects forward slash McKenna. Some kind of a definition for it, because the way it shows on here, it's kind of like a slash font. I don't have any explanation.
So there's, there'll be some special projects funds where there's multiple things put in there then. Are you saying then you're going to want to see, you know, so this is special projects 967-000. So we could basically start a, you know, we won't use each line each year, but 967-001 could be this McKenna thing, and then next year, if we don't have McKenna, but there's another special project in there, then we'll be assigning 002, so that historically you're not using the same number for different projects. I wouldn't have a problem with that.
Thank you.
What's the supervisor mileage, mileage, sorry, $4,000?
So there's mine and yours combined.
I got zero towards it, but I don't use it. Should I?
Again, definitely.
Yeah.
If you drive to meetings, educational stuff, wherever you go to, the township reimburses 60, this year it's 62.5 cents per mile.
I think I'm too lazy to do it. That's on you. Can I have some of your expense account and you can have the mileage, Ben?
Sure, we'll do some horse trading. I'm sure we can work it out.
What's the publications?
I subscribe to the Grand Rapids Business Journal and a couple of trade magazines. Any other questions?
Does this include the MTA anywhere on here or not yet?
Oh, that's a good one. So the MTA is in the dues. I knew I was forgetting one there.
Do you, you don't have to know exactly, but do you know, estimate how much that costs?
The MTA is expensive. MTA is, I want to say, close to $8,000 a year. I can, I can provide that exact breakdown at the next meeting.
That's all right. Can we get, though, the real dumbed-down way to access like password username to get onto some of their? Probably, you gave it to me initially a couple of years ago, but.
You can set it and password and get into the site. Write it down somewhere.
All right. We're going to move on to the clerks department then. So for fiscal year 2023, looking at just over $93,000 for the clerks department. Just a few items, really, this is just the funding associated with the manager of administrative services slash deputy clerk. And then we have some. Um, and then we have some, uh, part-time wages in there for the clerk as well, uh, and then all of the things that are kind of associated with uh, the employees. So for each one of these departments where you see employees, you're gonna see line items for memberships and dues for that particular person. Uh, education line item, mileage, expense account, uh, cell phone and data. So if we provide a cell phone uh, for an employee, we budget fifty dollars a month for the service. If we provide a cell-enabled iPad for an employee, we budget thirty dollars a month for, for that service. So I won't really go over those, kind of each department, just know that, uh, each one of those line items are in there. You'll see office equipment line item for, um, each line. So typically, this is gonna be a thousand dollars an employee. Again, this is things that they need to get in bookshelf or a filing cabinet or something for their desk or something like that. Every now and then you'll see a bump up there. Uh, so we do do computer replacements every four years. Uh, so if there's a computer replacement, uh, in that particular department, uh, you'll see that one be a little bit higher. Any questions about the Clerks Department or Sue, anything you want to add?
We don't need uniforms. So I see you took it out.
I took it out, yeah. There's only two departments that still have uniform line items. That is the Fire Department and the Buildings and Grounds because they're required for safety. Any other questions?
Wages full-time in the Treasurers Department that actually should be assigned to the manager.
Say that again?
The wages for full-time in the Treasurers Department should be assigned to the manager because Oxana's job is Deputy Treasurer is not compensated.
So I mean, that's something we can talk about, right? We didn't make that change when those job descriptions changed. So uh, Chrissy's, uh, job did stay in the Clerks Department. Oxana's job where it's budgeted to stay in the Treasurers Department. Um, additionally, you have Aaron, uh, our, um, Accounting Clerk two in this line item as well. So if the board wants to see those, uh, wages moved, I certainly don't have a problem with that. I'd probably move them to administrative rather than the Managers Department because that's where employees like the Human Resources Director um, and the Senior Accountant, both of them report to the Township Manager, but we budget that in the Administrative Department.
I'm not concerned about it from a reporting standpoint, as long as everyone recognizes that's the facts.
So for the Treasurers Department, you know, a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars this year. Again, most of these, uh, departments you're gonna see just kind of gentle, uh, bump ups. Uh, again, the Deputy Treasurer, uh, and the Account clerk two are in that wages full-time. Uh, and then you have the part-time line for the, the Treasurer as well. Uh, and then again, the rest of those line items are just related to the employees in, in that department. Anything else you want to add, Ken?
Is a hundred percent of Aaron's out of the Treasurers or does he split that with?
No, he's a hundred percent.
Admin would be.
So admin is, yeah, yeah. And that's, you know, so that's an artifact of why those different positions exist. Uh, you know, it was really important when kind of the administrative structure of the township was developed to keep the treasury and accounting function separately, um, you know, for checks and balances. So I think that's why that's what it was originally designed.
He's pointing out the Treasurers mileage is twenty percent of the supervisors.
As is your expense account. You think that reflects the importance of the position?
All right, so going on to the next department, we're gonna go to the Assessors Department. Um, for two thousand and twenty-three, uh, looking at just shy of three hundred and eleven thousand dollars. Um, again, most of the expenses in here are employee-related. Uh, so in the full-time line, you have our Deputy Assessor and our Residential Appraiser. Uh, and then in the Department Head line item, you have our new Assessor, uh, Real Assessor instead of the Management of Assessing Services. Still super proud of Jen through, through going through that process. And then if you bump down to the, uh, eight oh one line item, the Assessing Contractual Services, you'll see that, uh, that line is zeroed out for this year because we don't have to have that contractual assessor anymore. So they do have a casual, uh, line, line for wages here as well. Uh, we have a data entry person in our assessing department. She puts in between ten and fifteen hours a week. Um, and then we have budgeted, uh, for a department intern, uh, here as well. Uh, this, we budgeted for this, this current year, uh, weren't able to get it filled, but, uh, Jen is hopeful that we'll be able to find, uh, someone for next year. Um, and then down just to make a note on the service contracts here. Jen did purchase a CoStar subscription, uh, in two thousand and twenty-two. I'm sure Timmy knows what that is. Um, that's all related to, um, figuring out what properties are worth and listing, uh, sales and all that good stuff. Um, it was a, she just wanted to say she's very happy with it. Uh, it was a big investment last year, uh, but it's made her job a lot easier. So uh, last year was kind of a trial run, but she plans on keeping that in the budget going forward. Any questions about the Assessors Department? All right. Uh, next, going to elections. Uh, so this one you can see follows our little funky path, uh, and, uh, presidential, uh, election cycle. Uh, you can see that's when we have our most expenditures, uh, the non-presidential general, we still have quite a bit of expenditures. And then on the off years, uh, the expenses are a little bit lower. Uh, so, uh, line items of note, uh, we do have the wages casual line item in here. We have an election specialist position and we budget that for twenty hours per week. Uh, we do have money in here for election day workers and absentee ballot processing help, uh, potentially for an election as well. Again, Sue and her team want to figure out if that's something that we're going to, uh, combine with, uh, Caldonia or not. Uh, but we also have to consider that, uh, there'll be cascade, possibly cascade village, uh, election coming up as well, right? So uh, the Parks Committee is talking about, uh, possibly recommending a Parks Village to the Township Board for consideration. Uh, we have our library and one of our fire millages, uh, that will need to be renewed, uh, before, uh, August of two thousand and twenty-four. Uh, so there's a potential for us to consider those elections this year as well. Uh, those are conversations that all happened the first kind of month, the kind of first few months of two thousand and twenty-three. Uh, before when we determine, uh, when those will happen. But we really don't want to happen is for the Caldonia election to be in May and then there to be a township election in August and then another township election in November. So we'll try to make sure that we consolidate all of those into, you know, one election for two thousand and twenty-three if we end up having it. Anything you want to add about elections, Sue?
Where's the, um, so like that, what would it be last year's that voting machine, forty-four thousand?
Uh, that was back in two thousand and twenty-one.
Oh, so then it was just put on the?
So that was in the?
The reimbursements and for that were twenty-twenty-two.
Yes. So that would, but that, remember that went through the ARPA funds. So that wasn't in the election section.
Oh, because there will be a separate section for ARPA funds?
So yeah, we'll need to talk about at the end how we're doing, uh, the, um, uh, the ARPA funds going, going forward. That makes sense?
Kind of, except I thought it wasn't really from the ARPA funds.
That's where it was paid out of.
Okay.
Any other questions about elections? All right, so now we're gonna talk about Buildings and Grounds. Uh, so this is one of our little bit, uh, bigger departments. Uh, but again, kind of, uh, covers a whole lot of things in the township. Uh, so for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, down a little bit from twenty-two, and I'll explain that in a second. Uh, but we're looking about five hundred and ninety thousand dollars for, uh, this department. So the big change is that you'll remember when we adopted the budget last year. Uh, the position that we were looking at was actually a Director of Public Works. Uh, and that with having that title, it was budgeted in this department. Uh, with us eventually changing that to Township Engineer made the most sense to actually create their, and separate fund for Township Engineer. Uh, so we, as we get a lot of, uh, further along, you'll see that that new fund has been created. So the money that was in this fund for the Director of Public Works has been taken out and essentially added to the, uh, Engineering Department. We do have six full-time Buildings and Grounds employees. Uh, again, talked about this in the transfers, but one's funded by the DDA, one's funded by Pathways. Point seventy-five is funded by the Library. Uh, we do have casual wages in here for our summer help, uh, though the past couple of years we've had uh, quite a bit of trouble actually getting, uh, seasonals in. Um, they're still, uh, worthwhile, uh, to try to do that. We have two long-term seasonal positions that essentially go from April to October, and then we have two traditional seasonal positions that go from May until August. We know we'll be able to fill one of the long-term, uh, seasonal positions. We have a great employee, Chuck, uh, who chose to retire this year. Uh, he's gonna spend his winter doing fun stuff, uh, because they come back and help us out in the, in the summer. So uh, and then me and Jim and Katie have been talking about strategies to try to make sure we get those, uh, seasonal positions filled. Really helps, uh, with the work that's in the summer. But then you're looking at the rest of these line items, they're really all associated with the, uh, Township Hall and Buildings and Grounds, uh, facilities and equipment. So you know, we have our mileage, uh, small mileage one in there, sorry. Uh, we have the janitorial line item. So, uh, you remember, we approved the Hope Network doing the, uh, custodial work at Township Hall as well. We have heating, electricity, phones and maintenance for, uh, our Township Hall uh, in our buildings associated with, uh, the General Fund. Uh, we have some computer repair and office equipment, uh, some service contracts related to, uh, our copiers. Um, and then, uh, line item here for office equipment. It includes not only, uh, uh, office equipment for the Buildings and Grounds particularly. Uh, Jim, if he needs something for his office, uh, but then they buy a lot of small equipment as well to use around uh, while they're working. It doesn't necessarily raise the level of capital improvement, so. Any questions about the Buildings and Grounds Department? All right, and move on to our Cemetery Fund then. Uh, cemetery, uh, expenditures are, are typically pretty low, uh, though in two thousand twenty-three, we're gonna see a small bump up to twenty-six thousand dollars, uh, and that's really related to, um, getting ready to use new portions of the Thirtieth Street Cemetery. So uh, there's a small, uh, working group, myself, uh, Clerk Slater, uh, Chrissy and Jim, they get together every month to talk about cemetery issues. Uh, we think we're getting to the point now where we need to open, uh, one or two of the four sections of the new part of the cemetery that we built, uh, back in two thousand twenty. Uh, Jim is convinced that the ground is settled enough where we can start, uh, burying in there. Uh, but the plan is to have somebody come out and actually plot it out, right? So, uh, we'll have them come out. Well, they'll use GPS coordinates and survey it. They'll put in corner markers for all the plots. Uh, so then when, uh, Jim is in, his team starts burying people there, we can make sure that we're not off-kilter according, according to the map. So, uh, and then we do put a line item in here for, uh, backhoe services. Uh, we've been lucky not to have to use this the past couple of years, uh, but this is in here in case we get a hard freeze during the winter where uh, we can't actually, uh, do a burial with the equipment that we have. We bought our equipment, uh, back in, it's before I started here, so two thousand and ten, two thousand and nine. We bought equipment that allows us to do what we thought was basically ninety percent of the burials that we had. Uh, in order to do a hundred percent of the burials, the piece of equipment we would have had to buy was probably gonna be four times as much. So uh, the idea was, hey, we'll do as many of the burials as we can. And if we have a hard frost where we can't use our equipment to do a burial, uh, we'll, uh, have a, uh, contractor come in. I can't remember the name. Is, is it Dirt Cheap? Is that? They had a, they had a weird name. Yeah, yeah. But they're the ones that did the burials in the township before we actually bought our equipment. Any questions about cemetery?
Is the twenty thousand for maintenance, is that?
So half of that is going to be for the plot, plotting work. And then half of that again is just general maintenance. So if we need to buy sand or, uh, they would need to go out and buy seed or anything like that, there's a line item where that stuff comes out of.
We're gonna do something with, uh, green burial and then plotting one section?
Maybe.
So that's kind of what we were talking about, you know, opening two sections, right? So we want to make sure that, uh, if we do do green burials in the future, we have a section of the township dedicated to that. We don't want to mix green burials with non-green burials. Uh, so again, getting ready to do that, we're more than likely plotting out two of them. Um, and then figuring out, you know, is there a difference in the plot size between the green burials and the, the regular burials?
There is.
Also, Ben, is, I know this is a good time to mention, I know it's in revenue, cemetery openings and closing, but can we talk about possibly raising the fees?
Yeah, yep. So again, our working group has had to have, had a conversation about, um, what the fees look like for our cemetery. The research that Sue and Chrissy did, our fees are universally low. Uh, not only because we don't have just a straight charge for our plots, uh, but even the charge we have for opening and closing, the, the plots and all that are, are low. So um, Sue's recommended some fee changes that'll come to, uh, the board, uh, probably try to talk about it a little bit more at our next meeting. Um, but we still have to figure out where exactly that revenue then goes, right? So we have two different sections of our budget to talk about the cemetery. Uh, we have, uh, this section in the General Fund, which is basically just for the ongoing work that it takes uh, to maintain the cemetery. Uh, and then we have a Cemetery Trust Fund. Uh, and the idea of that is to put money away for, uh, future improvements that are needed at the cemetery. Uh, and trying to decide if this fee is raised, how much do we need to make sure that we're covering the cost of maintaining the cemetery as it is now for Jim and his crew to be in there and all that kind of stuff? And how much of it can we set aside? Uh, so if it's sometime in the future, we need to do something large to the cemetery as we're not dipping back in the General Fund to do that. Other questions? All right. Administrative, so this is another, uh, large item in the budget. So, uh, for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, uh, we're looking at uh, eight hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars, again, a small tick up from two thousand and twenty-two. Uh, and there is a lot in here to, to digest. So I'll go over a few of the ones that stuck out to me. And then happy to answer any questions that you have about these other ones. So uh, again, two full-time employees budgeted here, our Human Resources Director and our Senior Accountant, uh, both come out of the full-time wages. Uh, the wages part-time is our front desk clerks. Uh, so uh, we have two part-time front desk clerks that basically combine to cover a full-time job, uh, that works out really well. Um, I think Karen and Julie do a great job kind of being that entry point for the township. And I think they like, they like the job and we like them. Uh, so they're in here under the, uh, wages part-time. A couple other line items. So we do have our insect slash weed control here. That is the, uh, gypsy moth spray. Uh, luckily, knock on wood, uh, our spray has been steady or actually even decreasing over the past three years. Uh, my hope is that that continues. Um, though I'm expecting to have the fall survey report from our contractor uh, prior to, uh, the budget approval meeting on the fourteenth. So, uh, if he comes up with some bad news, I might have to make a change there, but uh, nothing indicates that, um, we should be seeing any increases. Uh, so legally fees, uh, so fiscal year two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two is really kind of, in my opinion, our peak years for legal fees as we work through some issues. Uh, now that some of those issues have been settled, I'm anticipating fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, uh, will be a little bit lower. Uh, so I rolled that back to, uh, seventy-five, uh, thousand dollars. Um, we have a whole host of line items here for the special events that we, uh, run in the township. And then we do have a special project line item here. Again, just like the other one, I can start to divide these out. So there's two different projects in this line item. Uh, one is our Community Communications Consultant, uh, which is Sable PR.
Where's that one, Ben?
Uh, Special Projects nine six seven zero zero zero, second to the bottom in the Administrative Department. Um, and then there's another project in here that'll be done, uh, in conjunction with the Building Department. Uh, so you hear me talk about BSNA all the time. BSNA is the suite of, um, software programs that really serve as the backbone of the township. So it is time to upgrade our, uh, BSNA service, uh, to, uh, what's essentially called BSNA Cloud now. Uh, so currently what we have is we have a hosted BSNA server. All of our applications are on there. Anytime anybody uses BSNA, it goes to our server, uh, back. Anytime anybody uses BSNA, it goes to our server, back out to the computers. Just like everything else in technology now, people are going to cloud-based service, and the next iteration of BSNA is cloud-based service, so this is about a a hundred thousand dollar project probably. I've got forty thousand dollars here in the General Fund, I do have sixty thousand dollars in the Building Department Fund as well, to kinda work on that project for 2023. The caveat is that they haven't been able to tell us, it took us almost eight months to actually get a quote from them for doing this. They haven't been able to tell us whether they'll actually be able to do the project for us in 2023. So if this is approved in the budget, we'll come back in early January, get approval from the, hopefully from the board for the actual project, that'll really just get us in the queue. You know, so it may be 2024 before we actually get the project implemented.
How much of the special projects is Sable?
Believe it's seventy-two thousand dollars, seventy, seventy-four thousand dollars.
Wait, so that was out of the hundred twenty-four estimated amount?
Just take forty off of that, whatever forty off of that is, the rest of it's for Sable.
Forty is BSA?
Yeah.
With additional staff, is there some of that be brought back in-house to lower the Sable portion?
So we do have Jessica that does a significant amount of our communications. I don't wanna say lower-level communication stuff, but she's able to, you know, post things on the website, and she helps out with the newsletter and post things on social media. I'll be honest, we could give Hunter forty hours of work if he was in the office for forty hours. I still think at some point we probably have to have the opposite conversation, is that if Sable gets too expensive, you know, do we need to use that money on an in-house person to focus on communications and rather using a consultant? I will say that I just found out on Friday that that's exactly what Plainfield Township did, so they've used Sable longer than we have, and when their, when their hunter left in the fall, they decided to make it a full-time position at the, at the township rather than continue to use Sable, so. I've got it on my list to do to, to talk to Cameron, who's the manager up there, about how they made that decision, and see if he had any financial stuff that he did to kinda sell that to his board, but at some point, we're probably looking at, you know, cause again, that, that money that we spent on Sable was really only buying us Hunter for twenty hours, plus some of the backend work with the higher-ups at Sable, which is very valuable, but, you know, at some point you have to balance out, it doesn't make sense for us to, just like we do with the engineer, right? Our engineering bills got expensive, and we decided it made more sense for us to have an in-house engineer. I think we need to do, eventually do that same type of analysis with the Communications Team as well.
It's looking like seventy-two thousand to Sable, and then we're still using Jessica. I think it's time to take a look.
I mean, doesn't Jessica have a degree in communications?
She does.
So we already have her, we could pay her a little more and give her a little more fancy title and.
Well, I, I think Ben has a good plan going down the road here.
Good.
Talk to Plainfield.
Yeah.
And see how they did it, and maybe the Township Board would feel the same way.
So I'm not saying that Jessica couldn't be that Communications Person, but I wouldn't add everything that Hunter's doing now to her plate. Essentially, she could, you know, be promoted into the Communications Person, and then we would have to backfill her position.
Sure.
She doesn't have enough capacity to do both her job and what Hunter's doing right now.
Understood.
There's twenty-four hours in a day.
You can take the stuff you don't like, shove it off on the new person, take the cream on the top.
Pretty much.
What about audit fees and services, is that with Bradwell?
That is with Bradwell, yep.
What's the contractor, what's the agreement with them?
I believe this is the last year.
Did we sign a three-year contract?
We did. In fact, I think we signed a five-year contract, I think this is year five coming up.
So for those, do we do RFPs?
Yep.
Engineering costs, thirty-five thousand, thirty-five thousand, fifteen thousand? The monthly expenses I saw were a lot higher than that.
So there's engineering line items all over the budget, there's probably, you know, eight to a dozen engineering line items, so this line item is specifically for things that were in the General Fund, and mostly the reviews of site plans for the Planning Commission, so with Eric taking on more of that, we've bumped it down from what it was before.
Oh, that's not in the Planning Department?
No.
And then legal fees, do those include Van Essen or just Foster Swift?
Nope, so the Van Essen fees have been put into the IRF Fund at the recommendation of Mr. Van Essen. So they can be tracked separately. I know there's a lot in here, so Regis, we talked about Regis before. So money for that comes out of there. We have this line item cable equipment grants, so that relates back to the peg fees. So while the franchise fees that come in through Comcast, AT&amp;T and Charter are available for the township to use at their discretion, the peg fees specifically have to be utilized for cable station education and government programming, so we essentially just take those peg fees, turn them around, and send them down to the station now. But they do all of the education and governmental programming for all of the entities in Kent County that don't have their own cable station, so a couple of them still do, I think Wyoming has one that they might share with Kentwood. I know EGR had one for a while, but most just send their fees down to Grand Rapids Station, again, I can't remember the call sign.
It's the two thousand for senior citizens.
So that is a program that we had done up until COVID in partnership with the Forest Hills Recreation Department, so Sue, and then prior to Sue, Clerk Goodike, it was like a senior appreciation lunch, so the Forest Hills Rec Department would organize it, we would pay for the food and the entertainment, so. They haven't done it since COVID. You know, they talked about potentially starting it up again, so I've left that money in here, but we won't be spending it this year again.
It was very popular.
On the same vein, you'll remember that we used to help sponsor the KDL Music Programming. They had an event in here called Sunday Afternoon Live, again, something they haven't done since COVID. I talked to Lulu about her plans for 2023, and she'd like to do something, so I kept that money in there. Again, for the KDL Programming, typically they come to the board with a proposal, and the board decides whether or not they want to fund it or not, so you might see Lulu again in 2023. This is where the right place is in here, so our commitment has been nine thousand dollars. So that gets plugged in there.
With Community Media Center?
So the Community Media Center is the same, basically, and we could probably just combine them, so this is just the way it was when I started, but the cable equipment grants basically passed peg fees onto the City of Grand Rapids Cable Station, and then this Community Media Center was actually an extra amount that the township actually provided as well, so they just wanted it to be shown that the township was providing beyond the, the peg fees. Quite honestly, the peg fees now have grown past that, so it's probably fine to just update that and combine those. Any other questions for Administration?
I could see the putting what Treasure Pierce raised, the other, the making admin bigger with technically could see how it might be a little more accurate. If you, like, for example, the U Management is under supervisor. I could kinda see that there in some ways to just keep the board financials separate and then administrative. Yeah, because it, it makes a lot more sense, because techni- it, it is, it makes me look wealthy and, or you know what I mean? Like, it just, it's more accurate. When we look at the, yeah, I think that'd be better, cause it's just kinda bringing.
If you're gonna do that, then you could raise a single argument for the.
Yes, which is what Treasure Pierce said, and technically the but I, but it's, it's technically where, what we agreed on with the wages. It's more accurate to do that.
Their non-official titles.
So technically, they really, I keep saying technically, to be more accurate, I think they should be, I think admin should be more full, and the trustees' positions, all seven of us should.
Not only would it be more accurate, but it'd be also more transparent.
Yes, cause this makes it a little confusing unnecessarily. Well, essentially, it's what we voted on already when we did the adjustment with the salaries. I think we should do that, Ben.
So. No, no, so again, this is just a kinda review, so whatever the board wants the, the budget to look like, so. But I guess I'm hearing two separate things here, so one is taking the Chrissy's position and Oksana's position, and the ancillary items that are associated with them, and moving them into the Administrative Department. So the other thing that I'm hearing is you saying take the clerk and the treasurer and the supervisor and move them into the Township Board section, no?
No, unless, well, you could, if there's a value to it, and just make them you know, specific line, as long as there are specific line items, you could do that with the supervisor, that might be actually, that might make more sense, supervisor, clerk, trustee. Sorry, treasurer. Make it under the board, yeah, and then admin would be, you know, manager and all the stuff that goes with it, that, that actually would make it easier to understand and more accurate.
I have no problem with that.
That'd be my preference.
It'll make the comparison budget look a little funky for a year, but I mean, that's, we've made changes like that in the past too, so.
Is there a downside that we're not thinking of?
I think the only reason we broke it out is before the treasurer and clerk were full-time positions, and the deputies were part-time. And then when Goodike was here, the, and Mary Carpenter, we, we made the change to make the clerk and treasurer part-time positions and the assistants full-time. And so we kept, we, I don't think they were ever combined, I don't remember them ever being combined before, but just to show what was spent in each area. To the office, it was five percent of the salary was allocated to treasurer and clerk, and ninety-five percent to the manager.
Say it again?
When I came on board, Oksana and Denise, two assistants, and five percent of their compensation was allocated to the treasurer. Ninety-five percent was allocated to their administrative duties.
Always worth where their compensation came from. Also, there was a change, were the elected officials clerk and treasurer ever full-time and compensated as if they were full-time?
Yeah.
That's what I'm trying, I'm just surprised it's so different.
They used to be full-time compensated, and their deputies were part-time compensated. But.
So then you could elect someone who is not qualified at all as a full-time clerk or treasurer, not, I'm not saying this is.
Not that we've ever elected someone who was not competent.
Right, obviously not, the public always decides.
That happened because Goodike didn't wanna work full-time, so he asked the board to actually reduce his, I found that document, actually reduce that salary, and then more of it went to his deputy.
But her job was also HR, so it was different. So back in the, before it was switched, were the treasurer and clerk full-time, making more, and the supervisor was also full-time in part, or?
No, the supervisor wasn't full-time, or the trustees, but the clerk and the treasurer, when Goodike was here, and Mary Carpenter, who's a clerk, treasurer, I'm sorry, were here, they worked full-time in the office. They did a lot of the things that Oksana does, and the deputy at the time.
Denise.
But Goodike wanted, like, like, like Sue said, he didn't wanna work full-time anymore, so he made the proposal to the board that that position be part-time, while the other issue was Mary. And Mary was getting ready to retire, so we thought now's the time to do it. So then we, we basically kept the things that Mary was doing and Goodick was doing under the new positions, Oksana and the dep- and who was the deputy clerk at the time? Denise. And then that's how it broke out like it is.
In smaller townships, the treasurer and the clerk supervisor, they do everything.
I know, it's just kinda scary.
So, you know, as I learned from Ben early on, the board can do whatever they want. They can, there are statutory duties, but they can flush that out kinda however they like, or whatever works for the situation, right, Ben? So that's how that came to be.
Well, the same thing is whoever's like the treasurer and clerk, they get to appoint whoever they want. If Ken had a good buddy and he wanted to appoint him deputy treasurer, he could. Our, our ability is to control what they get paid.
I understand.
So it, it may make sense to put it the way you suggest now, but to tell you the reason why it was broken out, that's why it was done this way.
So if we do do it that way, probably at least for the first year, what I'm going to do is there'll be three essentially blank departments in the budget, you know, the Supervisor Manager Department, the Clerk Department, and the Treasurer Department won't have any budget for the next year, but in order to have that history in there, and for there to be an explanation, I'll probably include an explanation page that shows exactly how that was parsed out, so somebody that's just reading through the budget will understand where those expenses went to. So we're all on board with redoing it the way suggested?
So ultimately, three people get moved to Administration?
So four people get moved to Administration, yep, so myself, Jessica, Oksana and Chrissy will get moved to Administration, and then Sue, Grace and Ken will get moved to Township Board, and then all the associated ancillary stuff with those people get moved to those other departments as well.
Oksana and Chrissy, right? They'll get moved, alright.
Very good.
So we're gonna gut the clerk's office, the clerk's and the treasurer.
So, question, Ben?
You wanna be empty shells, just like the supervisor, welcome.
So say the I guess you cross that bridge when you come to it, in case you ever wanna redesign the public service deputy clerk bit. If you ever wanna, you do that based on kinda what you have to work with. Cause when we hired Chrissy, she came with X amount of skillset. So the board can always refashion that however they need to, to meet their needs, right?
Yeah, I'd always try to explain, the budget's always a living document, right? So you guys could decide, you know, you could pass this budget the way we talked about in December, you guys could decide in February, hey, this is a bad idea, it's not working out, it's real easy to, to put, put back together, so.
And this is just how it's presented, it doesn't really change substantively anything.
Correct, yep.
Yeah.
What would happen if Ken wasn't elected, or Sue wasn't elected, the way we created the positions for Chrissy and Oksana, we called them something different, they're really not called Deputy Clerk, Deputy Treasurer, right?
So like, if you're in a city?
Now, let's talk about us, because if somebody got elected, Joe Blow, Treasurer, and he wanted to appoint his deputy, he has that right.
Yeah.
But Oksana's position is protected because she is not technically called the Deputy Treasurer. Is that correct? Because she is not technically called the deputy treasurer. Is that correct?
She holds a deputy treasurer title that's overseen by Ken, but she also holds a title. The, what was it, the manager of treasury services? Can't remember what that secondary title was that we gave her.
Yeah, she holds the title deputy treasurer, but she doesn't get any compensation for.
So she could stay, my point is she could stay at the township and we could hire a deputy. At a reduced salary, right?
Yeah, you could hire a deputy at a full salary, you could, I mean, Ken and Sue still have that right as well, so if Ken. All of a sudden didn't like Oksana, but all of the, everybody else did. You know, Ken could decide that, you know, he wanted Jill to be his deputy treasurer and he has a right to make that appointment. But the board has indicated, at least at this time, that that's an unpaid unpaid position.
Okay, and then Oksana in theory would stay whatever that other label is. And they could keep their job.
And then all Jill would be able to do is the statutory responsibilities of. The deputy or fill in for the statutory responsibilities of treasurer with the exception of voting at meetings.
Which raises the question, deputy treasurer, is that statutorily, is that everything Oksana does? Remember how the clerks was very technically limited under statute?
Yeah, I would say a majority of what. Oksana does, not having looked over that section in a long time, a majority of what Oksana does is related to the office of the treasurer. Some of the investments, investment pieces, and it may be not in that realm. At least not statutorily assigned to the treasurer. But I think. A lot of that is statutorily related to that position title. Again, so the, so it's related to the treasurer's authority, right? So the deputy treasurer itself. Doesn't really have any statutory responsibilities. It's the statutory responsibilities the treasurer has that could be assigned to the deputy treasurer.
Same with me. So I have statutory duties to run elections, but Chrissy and Jennifer do the daily. Processing. I have to make sure it gets done, but they do it. I'm there to oversee and same with. The cemetery.
You kind of took one for the team.
This, this for clarification, I am not gonna ask for a deputy trustee.
Very gracious of you.
What Jim's worried about is if he were to lose the election, we lose our deputy clerk.
That's always the worry, which. Is why Ben had made like Denise's job, she was HR slash deputy and the majority of her pay was HR. And the smaller portion was deputy, so that protects Chrissy cuz she's public service administrator. And if you had. My argument was you're not gonna find a deputy who worked for free around an election.
There you go.
But you have that protection, right? So you have that protection for that position. It's just the way state law is set up, right? So we work with it the best we can and try to make our everything fit.
Well, do you think? Just for the heck of it, we ought to run that by. Our auditor. I don't, I don't, the reason it's been separate is because we can keep good track of it. But, you know, I don't really care even either if it goes administrative. But it breaks it out nicely so you can see it this way.
And I think it's probably more a question for legal than our auditor. Our auditor is just gonna make sure that we did things the way we said we were going to do that. Where, you know, somebody in the Foster Swift team is a. Municipal finance expert and a card of, chart of accounts expert. We can run it by them and see if they. Alright, so I've got my marching orders for the administrative department. Any other questions there? Alright, so we have our yard waste fund. Budgeting this around the same amount that we did last year. We'll make a slight note here, so. The number for this department has changed. So last year it was department four-four-seven. Which when you go to the chart of accounts, four-four-seven is actually assigned to engineering. So we took the four-four-seven, used it for the engineering department that we. We'll take a look at it in a minute in a minute and then renumbered the yard waste four-four-three. So yard waste is four-four-three, but besides that change, nothing else has really changed for the the department, so. We have our spring and fall cleanup days. We have seen some additional costs for the electronic recycling. That was baked in this past year and next year as well. Then we have a line item for service contracts, which is kind of the rest of the stuff we do. So we do bag leaf pickup. We do our yard waste dumpsters in the fall and the spring for those that don't have access to the bag leaf pickup. We put some money in there, so if there's a big storm in the township and people are trying to get rid of storm damage, we have some money to bring in dumpsters. We've actually put those down in the rec park before, and then we do bring in the garlic mustard dumpster in the spring as well for our garlic mustard. And Ginny has emailed me at least four times to make sure that that got into the the budget this year, so. Any questions about the yard waste programs? Alright. So next we're gonna move on to our drain maintenance, a smaller budget, just over twenty-five thousand dollars next year. Part of that comes from, again, these individual engineering line items, you know, we've. Started to lower them as we're gonna spend more money on our township engineer and less money on consultants. But the primary item that comes out of here is whenever the Kent County Drain Commission. Levy's assessments, the township's always related, responsible for part of that, as we pay that out of here. We do clear, not clear out the Thornapple Hills drain, which runs. Right next to Thornapple River Drive, right? Yeah, it's Thornapple River Drive there. Before it empties out into Thornhill, we have some little weird baskets there that we clean out on occasion. And then do have a line item for drain engineering. We have our stormwater master plan. And as we kind of work through potentially doing projects in there, we have some meetings with residents, so. Not a huge item. I did talk to the drain commissioner. Couple months ago now, he did anticipate any big drain, Kent County drain projects in the township, so. We always like to have a little bit of heads up on those. A, we get a ton of complaints from the residents when they do a big project in the township. But B, the bigger the project, the more the township has to pay out, so doesn't sound like there's any huge projects planned for the township for the next couple of years anyways.
Ben, there was a project that they were gonna combine and do something with the Hidden Hills drain up there. Is that all complete?
So the combination is completed, but the work that they're planning on doing isn't. I asked Ken about that specifically, it didn't sound like there was gonna be any huge projects that would be outside the realm of what we. We normally budget for.
We have to be concerned about.
So what would be maintenance, drain maintenance, is that just what we we write a check to the county for their services?
Yeah, majority of that, and then again, if we do that, though, we that we're clean out, then money comes comes out of there.
And then what would be and examples of what then we pay out of that estimated ten thousand dollar drain engineering, like for what types of? Services would we be responsible for? Private residential or, you know what I mean?
So again, it's, you know, so we had our stormwater master plan that was approved back in two thousand and nineteen. And part of that stormwater master plan lists out areas in the township that need. Stormwater improvements, but not necessarily public infrastructure, right? So. And the best example I have is the project that we did with Schoolhouse Creek back in two thousand seventeen and two thousand eighteen. We partnered with the residents there to make drainage improvements in that area, right? So. None of these projects can happen if the residents aren't willing to step up and. You know, provide something to move that along as well. So as we pick off these projects, you know, kind of in order, we kind of meet with the residents in that area and see if they're interested. Some of those tell us to go pack sand, we're not interested in any type of public improvements and we'll continue to deal with it. Some of them, like the Schoolhouse Creek people said, hey, yep, you know, this is a something where this is degrading beyond our ability to maintain it. And we want some some help from the township, so this ten thousand dollars is just the kind of the investigative part. You know, we would use a combination of Eric and our new engineering consultant to kind of work through that. And then if there's some type of project that comes out, you know, typically we would. So this year we would look at it and if there's some recommendation that comes out, that recommendation could come for the board potentially to be included in the two thousand twenty-four budget.
Real quick, just while it's it's sort of related, should we have our new engineering firm take a real quick look at that? Was it Egypt Creek, that landscaping company, wetland stuff, do a real quick? Analysis, or you know what I mean, rather than, yeah, just and they can put it on paper, so we've got some teeth. They can put it on their engineering stationary. Fast track it over to Eagle, plus their governance guy talked about the different connections he has. We could tell him to use those.
Yep, I owe them an email anyway, so I will include that on the email.
Thank you.
Any other questions about drain maintenance? Alright, we got our road maintenance line item next, so again, budgeting just. North of four hundred thousand dollars for next year and a big majority of that goes to our road overlay program. So we're kind of working up to a a big project that will prob- more than likely take place in two thousand twenty-four. Rather than two thousand twenty-three. If you look at our Pazer map, and actually I should have brought a copy of it cuz they just emailed it to me yesterday. Our Pazer map is a sea of green, which is really is good, green is the the best roads. And there's a big red blob right in the middle of it, and that's the Berger Goodwood neighborhood. Which is really the the last vestige of local road work that we need to do, you know, the main vestige. Problem is, is that we don't want the road overlay work to conflict with the water main work. So we're having ongoing conversations with the road commission about the timing of that. The idea originally was that we were going to try to pave. The phase one part of the project in two thousand twenty-three when they got done. And then potentially pave the phase two part of the project after that. There's now the chance that those two phases will overlap each other. And the road commission is really worried about that, so the recommendation may ultimately wait till we wait till the entire project is done before we do the roads. But haven't made that actual decision yet. Nonetheless, we always start with a base amount of four hundred thousand dollars. And then as we get a little bit further along in the process, we'll come back with some recommendations to the board about potentially what what roads we should look at, but. Our roads have gotten to the point now where after the Goodwood Berger neighborhood is done. We're probably gonna be able to roll this back a little bit, and we're gonna be focused more on. Preservation of all of the roads that we redid over the past five years. Which is gonna be a lot less costly and we're gonna touch a lot more roads in a year, so. Whereas we did three and a half inch, you know, full mill and fill. Previously, we'll be able to do some type of overlay or protective sealant or, you know, one inch mill and fill. Which will mean those dollars will be stretched longer, so. When we started this process four or five years ago of accelerating the road maintenance, you know, my promise to you was eventually. You know, we're gonna get to the point where we're gonna be able to. You know, lower our investments in roads for a while, and it's it's coming, it's still gonna be a couple of years, but Pazer map looks really good.
And this is out of the general fund, right?
Correct.
So there had been talk about. Pathway maintenance, it's gonna be like putting a lot towards that, and since this is, since our roads are in good shape, possibly using some of that that's available. Which isn't restricted.
Correct.
Snow Avenue.
So we finished the engineering study. I've talked to a couple residents there. One of the residents that was really pushing for this project apparently is in the process of selling his home.
Does it start with a D?
It does, yeah, so I need to.
By the way.
What's that?
He did not sell it, by the.
Oh, he did that?
No.
Did he take it off the market?
I think so. He he was in to see me yesterday.
Oh, interesting. I had talked to him. It was right around election time, maybe a week after the election, so. His mind was in other places when I talked to him, but if he didn't sell that, that sounds good, so. We're at the step now where we need to get the residents back together, have them take a look at it, and then figure out what they're willing to contribute to the project, so. If Snow Avenue ends up being a project the board wants to do next year. You know, we could use part of this four hundred thousand dollars as our part of the project. Depending on how that we ended up with that split, cuz remember the road commission covers. Forty-five percent of reconstruction projects, so it's not a straight fifty-fifty. One point two million dollar project. So. You know, six hundred thousand dollars has to come from somewhere.
They, this this has something to do with it, but really not, but they don't have natural gas there either. And that's a another project that he's been working on. To get fifty percent or more of the people that agree to come in there and they they. Have disappeared, so, you know, getting gas and the road. Were kind of, they kind of wanted to do it, so.
Yeah, explain that to me as well, not to get off topic, but interestingly enough, you couldn't get consumers to come from Fifty Second Street. Cuz they didn't want to go under the railroad track. Or they couldn't get, couldn't get DTE to come under the railroad track, so they want consumers to come from Sixtieth Street. But that would be the only section of the township that is served by consumers. I don't think they actually have a gas franchise with the township. So we'd actually have to approve a franchise agreement in order for them to. Nothing, nothing is simple.
Does consumers issue, like, do they do an SAD or do they just cover entire, all the cost?
No, they don't cover the cost and they don't do an SAD. The residents have to pay upfront.
Much like cable TV. Same as DTE.
A cable TV. Back in the day, so like in Cascade, our neighborhood, did those, whoever was living there have to pay for the infrastructure? Or did they see it as it was worth it?
It depends on what neighborhood it is, you know, so when. When cable was popular and first became popular and they were just throwing up threads, you know, they, it was just basically a density issue. If they thought they'd have enough customers. To cover the cost of that, then they would put it up, so I think a lot of places you just, it just showed up and you got to sign up for it. Now we're having that problem again with the. Neighborhood here in the township where the density isn't there, so they're not be able to recoup those funds from the people that are signing up. So that people want an extended, actually have to pay for it.
Do we have any in the township, since we have whatever agreement with Comcast or Xfinity, do we, does that prevent other companies from coming in?
So it doesn't prevent them, right? But they all have their handshake agreements with the other companies that they won't move into other territories.
Could you violate that handshake agreement?
Comcast could violate, yeah.
What about Spectrum who served, I was talking to somebody who lives just on the other side and it may not even work, but they. On the other side of Sixtieth is served by Spectrum, I think it is.
Spectrum can go wherever they want in the township. Nothing preventing it. We would, we would encourage them.
Yeah, we would like it. I just wanted to make sure we could.
Yeah, yeah, there's nothing preventing them from expanding.
Okay.
Any questions about roads? Alright, so our engineering fund that we talked about, obviously up until two thousand twenty-two. Nothing there, and then in two thousand twenty-three, we have our engineering. So really, just the cost related to the township engineer. And those costs will be partially offset by transfers from other funds as well, so. If Eric spends twenty hours working on DDA stuff. We would take the full cost of his position at twenty hours and transfer that into the general fund to help cover it. But he is paying off in spades, everybody likes him. He has not told me no on anything I've asked him to do yet. I sometimes get emails from him at nine-thirty at night, so. He is a real go-getter, we really like him, and the value added for the township has already been outstanding.
Smart boy.
Glad we went with an engineer.
Any questions about the engineering fund? Alright, next one is the streetlight fund. Again, this is a pretty small fund. Had the same budget this year as last year at a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. Just a reminder that sixty percent of the cost of the non-DDA streetlights are reimbursed to the township through a streetlight SAD. So basically, anybody that's within three hundred feet of a streetlight shows up on that SAD, then they get a small amount on their tax bill. It's been a couple of years since I've looked at it, but I think most of the amounts are between twenty and thirty dollars a year, so. And then the township covers the other forty percent of the cost just through. Basic general fund monies, so we're seeing. So we're seeing kind of a leveling out of our light services, just like everything else, the actual cost of the energy is going up, but it's coming down as we're replacing our high pressure sodium lights with LED lights. So every time a high pressure sodium light goes out now, they put up a new LED light where the energy cost is significantly less. So that is kind of offsetting the inflationary increases of the energy. So hoping it'll be that kind of a hundred and thirty nine thousand dollar level for a long time. Did have an interesting conversation with the, it was the planning commission. They talked about the lights for a while. Talked about what would it take for us just to make the switch completely? So I'm going to do a little bit of research on that. I know the city of Kentwood did that, or they basically went to consumers and say, hey, we don't want you to put in LED lights. See, as they go out, we just want to replace them all at once. The city of Kentwood actually had to pay upfront for that. But the offset and the reduce and reduction in engineering costs, there was a return on investment in there of a couple of years. So at some point, you know, if we're interested in saying, hey, we're sick of this mixture of lights, we just want them to be all LED. We could potentially look at putting some money upfront to have that done and then recovering that cost through some of the energy savings.
Can the DDA also get that special recoup the special assessment? In their area too?
So they could potentially.
Do we?
We don't. No. So the DDA just pays straight out, pays the energy cost for all the lights in the DDA.
But we could take advantage of. So I don't think as a sitting member on the DDA that anyone knows that. So wouldn't that be a good, that should be, I don't think the DDA itself knows even that that option is available.
Yeah, we can talk to him about that.
So it seems like we should be taking advantage of that. We just don't take advantage, like Sandra just never did that?
I'll be honest, it's not common.
But why, I don't understand why we wouldn't take advantage of it.
So it's just a, it's a cost that you're putting back on to your your residents or your businesses, right? So I think the the idea behind the township doing it is that not everybody in the township benefits from the streetlights, right? There's people in the township that don't have a streetlight on their, on their street. So the idea was that for the residents to that benefited from the streetlights to pay a little bit extra. I guess you could make the argument that everybody in the DDA is close enough to a streetlight to benefit from it. But I mean, there's there there would be the lighting special assessment district is a is a tool that anybody can use.
So in theory, it would increase the businesses.
Increases their tax, increases their tax bill. Yeah.
Not much, but just a little.
Not much. Yeah. Like I said, with the residents, it's between typically between twenty and thirty dollars, depending on the value of their home. Moving on to transportation. So you can see this fund is down significantly from where it was in two thousand and nineteen. So really, the only transportation cost that's left in the general fund is our Hope Network Transportation Services. So and even here, where we've been lucky enough not to have to spend a lot of this money. Talked about this the past couple of years, but it used to be that the way the CDBG transportation funds were set up in in the county is that each municipality got a little slice of the pie based on their population. And once that slice of the pie was used up, you basically, somebody had to pay for that service to continue, right? So in two thousand and nineteen, they basically reworked that where it basically just said, now the CDBG transportation funds in Kent County are one big piece of pie and residents that are qualified for that service anywhere can use it until it's gone. So the township benefited from that significantly. We had used to budget between seventy five thousand and a hundred thousand dollars for Hope Network. We've whittled that all the way down to what do I have in here this year? Thirty six thousand dollars, and even that amount, we haven't used the past couple of years. Basically, what that amount is a safeguard. So if all of the CDBG funds disappear, it's money that's available for us to tell our residents, hey, you can continue to use this service. It'd been lucky since the change happened that all the CDBG funds haven't been used up. So we really haven't had to use a whole lot of that of that funding. So it's basically just a safeguard there. And then the other little amount in there is basically go bus tickets, and we really just buy those tickets and resell them to our residents so that they don't have to go down to the office or to Meyer to buy them. It's just a service that we offer. If you look in the revenue section, there's a little revenue line item for go bus tickets as well. Any questions about transportation? Moving on to our planning department. So again, a couple employees budgeted here. So you have the EDA Economic Development DDA Director. Again, that's half reimbursed through the DDA. We have our zoning administrator position. We have our front desk clerk that are in the full timeline item. And then we have our planning director that's in the department headline item. In the casual wages line item, we do have a eighteen week summer intern program. Typically, this has been somebody that we brought in to do kind of ordinance enforcement in our parks and public spaces during the summer. So this wasn't a position that we brought in in two thousand and twenty two as we were getting our zoning administrator up to speed. But we like to keep it in there for two thousand and two thousand and twenty three. And then we have our planning commission and zoning board of appeals in here as well. The planning department also has a special project line item. So there's two items in here. One is the planning commission has talked about possibly doing a master plan update in two thousand and twenty three based on some potential land use changes they might want to see happen. So.
Can they do that without the board's directed directive, just on their own?
So they could, they could start it on their own. They can't finish it on their own.
It needs ultimately board approval.
Yeah. So and then you've seen this line item a couple of times throughout the years. We call it tactical tactical urbanism, right? So we budget this in partnership with the DDA. This is a fund to kind of try out physical changes to the township before we actually want to implement them. So we haven't done one in the past couple of years, but talking to the DDA and talking to the planning commission, they'd like to keep that in there just in case there's. So one of the projects that we're talking about and we'll talk about here at the end, and when we get the DDA is changes to the Cascade Road Bridge to add pedestrian, safer pedestrian facilities on both sides. And there may be an opportunity for us to kind of test that out and see if we'd like it before we actually make the investment into it. So those are the types of projects that come from that technical urbanism. But just like the other special project line items, we'll start a kind of running tally. So we'll separate this out into two different lines.
You said this, but the wages full time?
The economic development slash DDA Director, the zoning administrator, and the front desk clerk.
We're at the front desk clerks in Badman?
So it's a.
Or the, no, they were the managers, a supervisor, right?
Yeah. So the front desk Turk is a title. It's Maddie's position that serves the planning.
Okay, so we got Maddie Madison.
Yeah, Maddie Madison, Brian, Brian.
And is this, this?
This is Maddie's position.
Got it. So you, we call her front desk clerk?
That's the title of the position.
That's confusing because she is not at the front desk. I thought she was administrative assistant. Me too. Okay. So, okay, that makes sense though. And then this one eighty thousand, Maddie Madison, and is that half of Sandra's or?
It's all of Sandra's. But part of that is offset by revenues that come in from the DDA. So the money that comes in from the DDA goes into the revenue line, and then her full salary is paid out of this line item.
Okay. You balance all this down like it's all good at the end of the day? Just a plan, you know what I mean?
Spend a lot of time looking at it.
I can make this budget, but I then have to, the tricky part is balancing it.
All right, we ready to move on to next department? All right. So looking at the parks department, the Parks Committee has some plans for some things they'd like to do next year. So one of the big changes is that they are working on a recommendation for a parks director. So they had a good, really good conversation about this, about what the timing of potentially bringing in a parks director should be, whether it should be prior to proposing a village or after proposing a village. And really, I thought the idea, even though the parks director position may eventually be funded or partially funded by the village, they really wanted to have those expertise on staff to help develop the village and the budget and what the department would look like if a village passes. So they are currently working on a recommendation for the board to consider a parks director position. I won't say that they've decided a hundred percent yet when that's going to come. But my argument to them was it's easier to take it out of the budget at some point than try to put it in later. So that's why that's in here right now. They meet December sixth, I think, is their next meeting, and they could have a recommendation as soon as then. So possible possibility that this could change before the budget comes in front of the board on the fourteenth, but I'm feeling pretty confident that they're going to recommend bringing on the director position prior to the village. If you look at the park maintenance line item, again, a bit of a bump up here. So a couple of projects that they want to work on. We're still trying to get the entrance drive to Grau Park up to Snuff. We continue to have issues there with flooding in the spring. So possibly looking at some, some additional changes to that stretch of that drive. They want to work on signage upgrades kind of in all the parks. And then gazebo in the pavilion down in Recreation Park needs some significant work. So you got some extra money in the park maintenance for next year. And then again, special project line item here, two specific things that they're looking at. One is they want to actually create a master plan for the recreation park to figure out how that, what the next phase of the recreation park might look like and what some improvements are needed down there. And then village preparation assistance as well. So you know, bringing in the parks director early on the one hand to provide some expertise on the development of a parks budget and what it looks like. But eventually, when, you know, if the board approves this going on a ballot, bringing in some professional assistants to help on a village information campaign as well. How do we get this information out the residents so they know what they're voting on? They thought having some professional expertise to help with that would be appropriate as well. So you know, kind of a significant bump up in the the parks department, you know, a couple of things in there, they'll just be one year items, you know, the parks director is really kind of that one. You know, so it would be obviously be fully in the general fund this year, you know, if that parks village does pass, you know, then the decision has to be made. Well, is it? You know, there's some places like Ada Township or their parks director is fully funded through their parks village. There's places like the city of Grand Rapids where their parks director is half funded through general fund, half funded through a parks village. So some details would need to be worked out that way.
Can we get any offsetting revenue from the Forest Hills Crew?
From McGraw Park?
So we don't. They have said that if we need to make certain, I mean, if we need to make expensive enhancements down there, they'd be willing to partner with us. But we don't get any revenue offset because they actually own part of that park. So the two and a half acres that their building sits on, the parking lot and the river frontage is actually a parcel owned by the Forest Hill School District.
But we pay for the maintenance in the driveway to be repaired.
On their section also or just ours?
So the drive is, the drive is ninety eight percent on our section. So there's a little part that goes then to their parking lot and then goes up to the the river. But yeah, a majority of that drive is on our.
At one time, there was a rift between the Cascade residents and them because we could not access the river.
The residents could not.
I mean, all we could do is drive down there and gravel drive, and that was it and turn around and drive back.
Was it an agreement that we'll maintain it, but then we also get access?
I have no idea about agreements.
Used to be. How about Ben? Can we access it now?
So I, I know from experience, I kayak down there all the time. So I usually launch from a little township's riverfront park and kayak down to McGraw Park. They've never, in the ten years that I've been here, they've never said anything to us about about that. You know, the one thing that comes up from time to time is they had on two occasions had some damage down there about locking the drive and trying to figure out, you know, especially after hours, how to keep people out. We did buy web-enabled cameras and then put them down there to seem to have solved that issue, but they've never, at the time, I've only been here ten years, but in the time I've been there, they've never had an issue with residents using that to launch kayaks or get out or anything like that.
Mick gave that all to the township. Is there a landlock? Is a school land?
There's a landlock.
Who, and who decided to land when he donated, whoever was donated it, did they separate township and schools?
Yeah, they must have.
And they didn't do any legal like easement for the school?
Yeah, is it documented somewhere?
I don't, I I don't remember it that way.
We could play hardball.
I thought Mick gave it all to the township and we're letting the school use it. No?
It's a school, school-owned parcel.
And from my understanding, it was before I was on the board, so I could be totally wrong. My understanding is for them to use lines, their parcel, they had have access, so the township generously bought the property so that they could have access to.
I don't think we bought anything.
We were given it by Mick McGraw, donate it to township. We didn't pay for it, Tom.
Was there, was there no access before? And then the township covered the cost of building access?
Would it be wise, would it be wise in sometime in the future for us to consider deeding that that access right now when we're to?
But then with that, we just then give up maintenance, we don't need to.
We don't, we give up maintenance, but we don't need the property because it's really not useful to the residents unless they want to use the waterfront. So maybe it'd be better off to deed our our section to them at a future meeting somewhere down the road.
I will say, I do think the Parks Committee has our eyes on all of that property between McGraw Park and the township border. They're, they're really hot and heavy on the water access parks and kind of creating that green space.
I want to see what they're going to do with the spawning property first.
Access. Yeah, we gotta get access.
Anyways, I worked, Ben's.
Ben, I just, I agree. I've been there a hundred times and I see residents walking down there all the time. I've never been challenged about using it. I go right down to their docks and even when the schools are there, they've, they've always been. Anybody's for hoping to go there.
Hopefully it stays that way. And if it doesn't, we've got, we can work something out.
Yeah, but I don't think there's any.
The one thing that the park, so when we, at the Parks Department of the chair, we've had conversations with a lot of different people from different groups or communities. And what Cascade doesn't have at all is to really be effective, a village, and then you have to have a relationship or someone to work with private individuals and businesses because you got to get private funds and then also grants. And when I started, Steve Peterson said, oh, we're lucky, we can't really get grants. We're too wealthy, which isn't true at all. So we could really get cooking with gas if we get the parks director, but then that director then would know how to establish relationship with private parties, grants, and then also with village. Because right now we're just kind of floundering. We don't have any structure. Which I think is really hurting us compared to other communities. We seem really behind. Like a lot behind. And I'd like to put that in all caps in bold. With an extra emphasis. Highlighted as well.
Here, here, me, Ben.
Any other questions about the Parks Department?
I just like to make a dramatic pause to let that resonate, how far behind we are.
The only other thing that's going down the road, if we do get a parks director, there's a intimate tie that between our buildings and grounds people.
Yes.
Yeah.
So we'll have to figure that out.
That is an added benefit is that, you know, the, if there was a single drawback to going from the director of public works position to the township engineer position is that we kind of lost that administrative leadership for the buildings and grounds department. And a Parks and Rec Director would certainly add to that as well. So.
Makes sense.
All right. So we do have a small historical department. So the primary cost out of here is continuation. We contribute seven thousand dollars a year to the Historical Society. They kind of stepped up this year in getting the museum open to the public specifically during Heritage Day. They were a huge participant in that, and I think more people went through that museum and Heritage Day than probably had been in there the past couple of years combined. So it's a good group. And then we did, I did put some little extra money in here. We just. Uh we just need some window work and painting at the building as well, so we still have responsibility for the maintenance of that building. Any questions about historical?
I heard that that airport exhibit was initiated by the airport and then paid for it and put together by. Have to pay for any of that? Like to note, the timing is kind of ironic.
Yeah, we're beholden.
Heck no, we're not beholden to fake, no, but I just think it's all of a sudden boom, the article is about the history of the airport in the shape of super. Fancy thousands of dollars fancy exhibit and they approached the Historical Society about it. Transportation survey pops up on next door. Is it just me?
I hadn't heard that, so I don't know.
Board knows nothing about any of this? We're all just being played? Okay, well, it helps, information's help, do you get what I'm saying, Ken?
Knowledge is power.
Yeah, so they approached the Historical Society with the idea, all of a sudden, I had no idea, and then afterwards, that big fancy exhibit that. We can't, it's not open to Santa and Mrs. Claus could not meet children inside the Historical Society last pe- last weekend. Because of the giant, beautiful, expensive, professionally done airport exhibit. So it was so nice that they had to meet him outside, but that was initiated by the airport who approached the Historical Society and then funded the entire thing. While the Grand Valley Metro Council is doing an in-depth transportation survey.
Historical Society reports to the board. Do we, I don't remember getting any reports from.
We get it every year, we get like in January, they give us a report of their activities and expenses.
I guess there's some additional questions that should be raised on that.
Yeah, and then that that would also, the timing is ironic because right now the Planning Commission is in in-depth analysis of whether. That backside farmland should be, how that should be zoned and there's a hot debate and. Turns out there were private meetings at the airport with the township people a few years ago, lots going on. Just trying to raise awareness and transparency. Lot of money to be made by hacking up farmland and and selling it off as smaller commercial parcels, fortunes could be made. Like stairs?
No, I agree.
It's just funny, the irony of money and politics.
I I I'm confused. Who owns the, who owns the property?
Right now, uh tha- that's what's bringing it up. One family sold, one family sold a parcel to Vissar who developed, just buys and sells property. And right, and then it was zoned.
Hey.
Agriculture future commercial?
Industrial.
Industrial, sorry, and I was talking to a, the new engineer, he's like, future industrial, that sounds like somebody's got a plan. It's bizarre, and then it turns out the Vissar guy got ticked off at a planning commission meeting. When the planning commission is looking at keeping it agricultural for a buffer and a residential area and the Vissar guy got super mad and was like. Um we had, we had meetings at the airport, this was a, this was all great, we had a dunk. The chair, the airport CEO, the engine, the township engineers, blah, blah, blah. We knew nothing, I didn't know anything about it, it was before I was on the board. It's just, so then the airport goes and pays, pays for thousands of dollars to a historical society. While the, while the things are heating up.
For sale sign on it now, industrial.
But it was.
But it's agriculture.
And then they said, oh, there's absolutely no, none land, no land available, there's plenty of land available, it's just that this is agricultural, so you get it for pennies on the dollar and you turn around and sell it.
But it's agriculture, right?
And we control it. It's, we, it's, how is it zoned now?
Agricultural.
No.
Yes.
With the future caveat.
So the the future land use plan is completely separate from zoning, so the fut- the zoning right now is agricultural. The future land use plan says that can be industrial in the future, but it has nothing to do with the zoning of the property. But we make the decision, right? Yeah. So we control it, if it's agriculture, we can keep it.
We can, it's just important that there's, we, I completely agree with you, but there's a big discussion, so as of now. Future land use comes in the form of what, the master plan?
Yes.
So do you guys see how the airport consultant used our own master plan as part of the reason for to, I mean. Do you guys see what they're doing?
Yeah, but they can't.
Our master plan doesn't all reflect our strategic plan, so.
Our master plan isn't, it doesn't change the zoning.
No, but if we all sit around passively, like we don't know what's going on, this is all happening right underneath our noses and then it's done before, you know, before long it's. Done, and right now it is future industrial, so if we don't act, if we don't wake up and pay attention.
Right, but they can't do anything until we change the zoning, we have no intention of changing, changing the zoning.
Except we do, because our own master plan reflects that we do have intentions to make it future industrial.
Well, then the start will be doing the master plan.
Yeah.
That's going down the road at the next meeting with two.
But it's gotta come sooner rather than later because they're basing major million-dollar decisions.
Yeah, but, but, but Grace, I I would think, I would call them stupid if they make. Decisions based on things that we control and we aren't gonna change.
Hundred percent, but I would call us stupid if we sit back and passively just say, oh, everything's fine while. And and we learn about private meetings behind the scenes and that kind of stuff, it's super important.
Yeah, right, I'm just saying, we control it and I think we all agree, we wanna keep it agriculture, and if they're gonna go sell things falsely. And lie and say that this is zone industrial when it's not.
Yeah, it's a bad business investment.
And it's a bad business just and let them make stupid decisions, but we are gonna keep it agr- agriculture.
I pat you on the back if I was sitting next to you right now.
I think we all agree.
Good job. But then, we gotta make sure our master flat, master plan reflects that, which it does not right now, right now it reflects what they want. In theory, but the planning, I think we should direct the planning commission to look into that and the planning commission has had.
I think they are.
They are.
But they're worried about what the board's gonna do.
Well, the board isn't gonna change it. I I drove down there after we had this discussion before and I agree, it's not. An area that should be industrial, there's beautiful houses back in there. Large houses and large parcels, if you remember some of the options that they were looking at to extend the freeway.
Yes.
And we told.
Residential property to do it.
But it's all little pieces of information that had, are slowly coming out that we're not privy to, we should be.
Firstly, I view the airport. To Cascade Township, because I view Russia to Ukraine.
Okay, great job, but this is super important and it needs to happen.
Yeah, but I just think, Grace, people are 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 are. Creating falsehoods and we know the facts, the facts are, we control the zoning. It's agricultural, we're gonna keep it that way, and so if they wanna go and fabricate stories, then. They, we can't stop people from fabricating stories and spreading it around on the internet, I mean, there's so much, there are five billion fabricated stories on the internet, and so. You know, the facts are that we're in control, that's a good thing.
That's fantastic, and I'll, I wasn't here, so, and that's great that we're in control and I couldn't agree with you more about the long-term plans. I just question then how the master plan reflects the opposite. We can change it, but it's just notable, because if that were true, it wouldn't be in our master plan and we wouldn't be played like. Clueless fools when the transportation consultant from out of state comes and, you know, makes the pitch using our own master plan against us. So as the board, proactively, we look kind of foolish.
Are we reviewing that soon?
That's Ben, Mick, planning, it's not just the planning commission, the board, it's a big, yes, we are, we should.
And there's money in the planning department for master plan update.
So somebody went rogue on us, either that or it changed.
Special projects.
All right, so we really kind of save benefits insurance to the end because there's benefits and insurance departments in um. Uh both the fire fund and the building fund as well, uh so we'll circle back to that at the end of the presentation. Uh so capital outlay, uh we're looking at spending some capital money in two thousand twenty-three, just shy of five hundred thousand dollars. So a couple of items in here, so in our capital outlay, furniture, fixtures and equipment. Uh we have some equipment in the Buildings and Grounds Department that needs to be replaced. Uh we have two grandstand mower replacements that are due, as well as our large Z Master. Um and then we are looking at filling out the columbarium space in the thirtieth street cemetery, so. Um you remember that when we did the thirtieth street cemetery upgrade, uh we put pedestals in there for. Uh three of the, three more columbariums, but hadn't put columbariums on them yet. Uh the columbariums are. Um pretty much full at this point, there's still a bottom, kind of a bottom layer in each one of the columbariums. Uh but it's time to uh put in those, those other ones, uh that'll all kind of relate to the fee structure as well, so. I think we talked about uh discounting those bottom uh columbarium niches to try to get people to entice them to take that, so. Uh we got that included in furnitures, fixtures and equipment, and then another recommendation from the Parks Committee. Uh they recommended three hundred thousand dollars for uh Wycliffe Park Development. Uh so as part of the Parks Master Plan that is culminating and hopefully an approval by the board in December, uh they've come up with some. Uh a development option for Wycliffe Park, uh the initial estimate is around three hundred thousand dollars right now. Uh so they've asked that that be included in the two thousand and twenty-three budget.
Or can we sing a plan, or are they gonna present a plan for that?
At the meeting on the fourteenth, yes.
Then, one other question, and and so um we expanded the park above thirty street, were we gonna move one of those columbariums?
We. Relandscape that area where the columbarium are. Pads for three more, so it's, it's along that circular path. The reason that plan did not move forward with previous clerk was because he wanted to move the columbariums. We did not want to because that's a massive mess.
Okay.
So that's why it got.
We don't have to worry about that expense. Cool, that's all.
Right.
Any questions about our capital outlay? All right, uh we have our transfers like we do every year, four hundred and forty-one thousand five hundred dollars. Uh majority of that is a transfer to the fire fund, uh you'll recall when we approve the budget every year, we approve a resolution. Uh that shows that the economic conditions in the township are steady and that that transfer is recommended, that comes specifically from the. Uh village language back when that was approved, um so and again, our economic conditions are good, so that transfer is being recommended. Uh we have a transfer to the cemetery, um. Again, we talked about that cemetery fee recommendations could be forthcoming, uh so the revenues and therefore the transfers could go up as well if those fees are approved. Any questions about our transfers out of the general fund? So we do have a new department uh in the budget this year, which is our debt service, uh so you recall the bond that we took out. Uh we are doing the uh debt repayment on that, utilizing general fund revenues. Uh so that has been added in as the first payment will be due next year, uh four hundred and fourteen thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars.
Need a motion on the fire fund transfer?
No, so that resolution will actually come in front of the board when the budget does, so you guys will be able to approve it then. Uh so then looking at our overhaul general fund expenditures, if you package all of the departments together. Uh looking at just over six million dollars in. Expenditures for two thousand twenty-three, which is still lower than we did in nineteen or twenty, but a bit higher than twenty-one or twenty-two. And then looking at our fund balance, uh how the general fund fund balance has been uh fiscal year two thousand twenty-two. Uh pop up to seven point eight million, um we are anticipating a little bit of spend down of fund balance next year. Uh just over a hundred thousand dollars, but there are quite a bit of one-time expenditures in there. Uh so I'm not particularly concerned about that, uh the big discussion will be here at the end when we talk about how much fund balance from the general fund. We're gonna use for the remainder of the fire station project. Any questions about the general fund before we move on, or if you guys wanna take a break, I know you've been listening to me for a while now.
We're not gonna.
That's all.
Do we do timing based on thickness of page, like how much is left?
No, cuz the rest of the funds are typically one page per fund and a lot of them I can go through in ten seconds, so.
I'll stop my questions.
Still gonna try to get us out of here by four.
Sure, Timmy, thanks. We think sometimes a boss gets wrapped around axle too easily. Should be a pretty quick time. As we keep our comments relative.
I talked things out already in meetings all morning, I don't need to do this afternoon.
Sue, Sue went out to get some. I told her to get all of them.
I got some extra with you, like me drop one off to you sometime.
So Ben, you got, you're, your kids looking forward to snowboarding this year?
Yeah, we got that, so they wanna, they're like, can we just go sneak into Kansasburg?
Oh, do you like?
It made some, some rounds.
Oh, no problem, I, we just took.
My son went over to Pine Knob, they were open, yeah, a couple of day, and then he went up to Traverse City, Traverse City had a little place.
Okay.
Uh Holiday up around um, up towards Southern Bay, they were open, they had a big park, they had a real jam. So, yeah, but now I don't know if, I mean, Boeing was open, Boeing opened on Thanksgiving.
Doesn't mean I won't go for a cook, we're heading up to.
I, oh, good, I like nuts. This is your thing.
We ought to get you tall stools so you can at least sit down. We ought to get you tall stools so you can at least sit down.
Do you want to sit at the table, Ben?
No, I'm good.
Thank you.
Sorry, I have more food.
Well, what the heck? Keep my arm.
Such as I have to give you.
I would, I just think, but thank you.
Those are pretty good, aren't they?
We're going to move on to our other funds now. Remember from past years, it goes a little bit faster. First being summer 30 trust fund. Which includes cemetery. Generates approximately $90,000 a year. Here, anybody with a mom who's holding a site has to pay. But then talking about those revenues, we have specifically enough with cemetery fees. You have just a small couple expenditures that come out here. Buy new flags for the cemetery. They've got money here. You know, keep some money in there. There's just a binding restitution repair. Farmers are looking really bad. Questions about the cemetery trust fund?
It's on now. So fire fund, obviously, this is a big one. You can see the fire fund, just like our other revenues gently ramping up over the past couple of years, just shy of $2.8 million in 2023. So our mileage rate, which is actually three combined millages for the fire department is 1.2894 mils, which is rolled back from 1.3005 mils in fiscal year 2022. I really won't go through this. There's a slide like this for each one of the funds. Really has all of the same information on it. Talks about general property taxes going up, personal property taxes being down just slightly, the community stabilization share replacing that. Our interest rates rebounding, so I won't harp on that in each one. But for this one, we'll note that there are the two transfer ends. Again, the general fund transfer that's being recommended of $400,000. And then there is a building fund transfer that comes in that covers 25% of the fire inspector's compensation. So again, we have two two inspector positions in the fire department, the marshal and the inspector. We combine those two positions and take 25% of that. Because there's basically 20 hours a week that's being spent in the building department doing building related fire inspections. As far as the expenditures are concerned, looking at $3.1 million in 2023, not including fire station number one construction costs, obviously. Not a whole lot of changes for the the fire fund when it becomes expenditures then. Still recommending the same organizational structure, the fire marshal and inspector, the three fire captains, the three fire lieutenants, the 12 firefighters and the administrative assistants. We have a fire chief and the department headline item. Again, just like the general fund, we have this assignable salary line that will be zero in the final budget. And our overtime and paid on call usage is now becoming normalized post pandemic, right? So we had a lot of issues 2020, 2021 and part of 2022. We ended up with a lot of firefighters that had COVID. And because of the regulations, you have to keep them out a certain amount of time. Well, when you're keeping them out, you can't just not have the firefighter there like we would in other places. You got to have somebody either come in and overtime or a paid on call coming in backfill. So we did see some ramped up overtime and paid on call usage for those two years. But we're really looking at that being normalized now. A lot of these line items are the same as they've been in the past. We do have a combined training and education for the whole department in line 726. In 2022, we added a couple of new line items for fire prevention, tech rescue and health wellness. The idea behind that is that there's members of the fire department that are specifically responsible for those programs. So we're trying not to intermingle the program costs, make it easy for those firefighters. We have communications line item in there. That's all of the phone data and technology. Vehicle maintenance is obviously a big one. Spend a lot of money maintaining a lot of expensive equipment. So we have a lot of funds in there. Utilities are all combined into into one line item, including the leased facility. A couple of small capital outlet items for our furniture, fixtures and equipment. We have our rope replacement. We do rope replacement every two years now. We have a radio replacement in there as well. And then we'll just mention that we are continuing our spend down of the fire fund in anticipation of the next renewal. So for the end of fiscal year 2023, we think that the fund will dip just below $1 million, which is kind of what we are anticipating in anticipation of that next millage amount. And again, there's a big benefit section. We'll talk about that at the end. Combine all three benefit departments.
Quick question, Ben. The utilities includes our rent?
I believe so. Well, I know what you're looking at.
I think you said included.
It includes utilities for the the building. The rental costs are will be in the fire station number one fund. We put that in there in that construction fund. Any questions about the fire fund? See, I told you we move a little bit faster. So next item is the police fund. So our police fund revenues up to $841,000 for 2023. Our mileage rate is 0.46 mils, rolled back from 0.46 to 4 mils. All the other revenue caveats apply. So our expenditures, 79, 791,000, 2022 and 791,000 in 2023. So we are getting a new added community policing officer. So you remember back in this current year, we added a bunch of money into the sheriff's contract for additional patrol services. And we've been using those for high visibility patrols, kind of in the residential areas. So for next year, some of that will be eaten up for the new community policing officer. Who'll be starting after the first, but there's still money baked in for additional patrols as well. So that additional community police officer will be able to do some of that additional stuff that we were doing. But still have money in there. If you want special patrols for something, we can order that up as well.
Community police officer, we're still going to have only one, right?
We have two, two, two community policing officers. Yep. So and we, the sheriff's department has offered that to an individual. I got to go through the interviews right before Thanksgiving. Her name is Deputy Chase. She's actually a Ada resident. We'll get here 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 in January. So you guys can meet her. So but super high energy. Had a great interview. Came highly recommended. And I think her and Omar will be a good team to serve the community. We'll note that the police fund is continuing to accumulate fund balance. So it slowed down a little bit, but still looking at $1.7 million in the fund balance of the police fund. Sorry, I would just note that, you know, for the other funds, the fund balances can be earmarked towards capital improvements or one-time expenditures. Really don't have a lot of one-time expenditures in the police fund. And even when we do, they're fairly small, like when we bought our own speed trailer. So we really need to start having some thoughts about do we continue to accumulate funds in here? Do we ramp up even more police services? Do we roll the millage back? This is the one department where it's really hard to justify the continued accumulation of fund balance in it.
When is the millage up for renewal?
2028.
We can roll it back anytime though.
But I don't, we've got major hotspots in the commercial areas. Although hopefully, but we're going to look at recouping those costs. There's a few hotels that just suck up all the first responder calls.
Yeah. Certainly not a decision we need to make right now. Just something I want you guys to keep on on your forefront. And if you guys do decide, hey, we really want to have, you know, extra police presence, you know, there's money in here to continue to beef that up. So no, no financial issues in the police fund.
It's a good, good problem to have.
We have a lot of good problems.
We are so first world.
So our hazmat fund, this is another small one. We actually have a three department hazmat fund with Kentwood and Cutlerville. So really, this is just each one of those departments has a staff or two kind of dedicated to hazmat response. This is really kind of to maintain the hazmat trailer and the materials. Each one of the departments puts $2,000 towards it each year. They haven't had a whole lot of expenditures out of here. It's really just kind of replacing the the consumables on the trailer when they do have a hazmat response. So the three chiefs have recommended again, this year, we just kind of continue that $2,000 contribution, which is kind of keeping that fun balance kind of right where it is or a little bit higher, a little bit lower. They are looking for additional partners. So they've, I think they've talked to Caldonia and maybe Wyoming about possibly joining as well. So this is based on a multi-jurisdictional agreement. So any additional partners will have to come back to the township board for potential approval. And again, that fun balance, you know, down a little bit for 22 and down a little bit again for 23, but absence of any large expenditures, they're not going to have any financial issues anytime soon. Any questions about the hazmat fund? All right. Next fund is the open space fund. Again, just like our other tax fund, the revenues are gently creeping upward for 2023, looking at $461,000. So the millage rate for the open space fund is point 2269 mils, rolled back from point 2274 mils. And again, the revenues following the same general pattern, I will note on the end for the interest on investment. So this is the fund, if you recall, where we have a section of this fund dedicated to the home wire fund. That is money that's reserved for the future future purchase of open space land in the township. But we do have a agreement with the executives of the home wire trust that we will consult them before any of that fund is spent. And then the interest that we earn on this fund, we try to allocate it appropriately. So the interest that's earned on the part that's earmarked for the home wire fund gets re-marred into the home wire fund. And then the rest of it just goes to the fund balance, the regular fund balance or for usage.
Question. Why can't we use some of that money to purchase property around the airport? It's privately owned right now, right?
Or the development rights?
So two different aspects again, right? So if you wanted to use the home wire fund part of it, we would just need to consult with them to see if that's something they wanted to do. Using the other portion of it, we would have to follow the the language of the millage. So you wouldn't be able to buy a piece of property in there and then like turn it into like a baseball field or a soccer field or something like that. If you were going to use it for the the maintenance of open space, it would be a potential, a potential option for the township.
Just as a buffer, right?
So open space expenditures, $432,000 in 2023. Just a couple of items in here. Again, the biggest part of this goes to debt service on the bonds that were taken out when we purchased the open space. We'll note that it was refinanced in fiscal year 2018, advanced refunding bond. So the original bond was paid off and now we're just paying on the refinance bond. So a majority of the cost is related to that. We do have a couple of small items in here that weren't in here last year. So parking lot work at Burton Park. We have a small parking lot there. We've gotten some complaints about it in the winter. Primary issue is that it is angled away from the road. It's hard to maintain a gravel parking lot because if you salt it, it gets super smushy. So there's problems with, you know, ice accumulating. So our township engineer has been looking at it for a potential solution. And then I used the term invasive species management, which translates into possible deer management. So did put a line, a line item in there, basically just some money, a $30,000 placeholder that says, okay, if we want to have some type of deer management program in there, at least there's a financial placeholder. I really have no idea what anything would cost or what it would look like. You know, really, we'll start having that conversation when the professor from Cornerstone comes back to us in first quarter next year to talk about the deer population in Burton Park and what it might, what we might be able to do.
Ben, is it silly to think, to look at the deer mileage, if people want it, just put that in the form of a millage? So then it's out of our hands as far as making a heated decision. And if people want it, they can vote for a small tiny millage. And if they don't, they don't. So that we don't have to take the heat over whether we kill Bambi or whether we fix the huge problem.
So in order to do, you say millage, right? Not Special Assessment District?
I don't know. I don't care how to do it. Basically, I mean, no, especially millage would, I think.
We would just need to go through and make sure that there's enabling legislation that allows for that. So I would think that there is because there's got to be because a couple of communities that did gypsy moth in the past. Now I think they special assess for that. I don't know. I'd have to look more into it.
Okay. And is there, would it be too small to do a, I just like the idea of voters deciding if they get it, if they want it, they get it. If they don't, they don't. And it's not us being
I mean, there's some small millage out there, millages out there. I think the, I've seen veterans' millages as small as like, you know, 5% of a mil, you know, or 500ths of a mil, just to like maintain a building or something like that. I think the county has some small ones. So I don't think any millage would be technically too small. Just again, it depends on what it comes back, right? So if if the study comes back and they're like, oh yeah, you're going to have to spend, you know, $300,000 to do a, you know, licensed call and all this kind of stuff, then obviously that's a solution. If you know, it comes back and says, yeah, it's $50,000. You know, then it's just decision on what's the best way to raise those funds. But yeah, I would need to look into, make sure that there's enabling legislation to allow us to have a millage. I got to think that there is. So Special Assessment District would work, you know, specifically if you're just targeting one area, right? So if you were targeting Burton Park and the special assessment always has to add value to the properties you're specially assessing, right? So if you're adding value because the deer are no longer eating the hostas in front of Joe Neighbor's house, then you can make that that connection. So Special Assessment District, I'd say is a yes, that's an option. I'd want to make sure that the millage is an option too.
What's the challenge is what do you do with the money? And then how ubiquitous is it? I mean, last week, there were four car deer accidents between the Camelback Bridge and Ada, downtown Ada.
Just four?
Just, yeah.
I mean, sorry, four.
And just a little small area. So it's not just Burton Park. I mean, it's a
Right. So the specialist
End of our street two days ago. I mean, they just, they're just everywhere. So you know, it's not in Burton Park. And so then how do we use that money? I think that is what residents are going to ask us. And that's the challenge.
Yep.
And again, first thing we want to do is put the decision in the people's hands. Do you want us to kill Bambi or don't?
That's why I like the idea of a millage. We gave you the action.
Because I don't want to make that decision.
I like the millage idea.
But what if the, I, I would bet, just gonna bet.
But the people will speak.
Yes, but we still have the problem.
Right.
So we still have to do something.
Then they can put on their sneakers and go door to door to pass the village.
I think they drove them all out of of Burton Park in my neighborhood. I, I think within a five feet, I saw 12 of them Friday night. That's, you know, we've got it over population, but I don't think they're all in Burton Park.
Oh, no.
No.
And we can use other property owned by the township, right? Or in theory, with permission of private property owners?
Yeah. So I don't think Yeah, so I don't think there would be an issue with us doing some type of management on private property with their permission. I think you can still tie that back to a public use, right? So there's a public benefit to the deer population being controlled. So that's always kind of the measure when you're spending public money on private property is, okay, what's the public benefit to it? I think you can make that connection.
It'll be interesting to see what they come up with.
I think he's going to do the, not my problem how you deal with it, but here's your data overpopulation.
Good luck. Here you go. So again, then the open space fund balance up to $840,000 next year. And again, there's about, just shy of $400,000 of that. It's kind of earmarked for the home wire, home wire fund. Damn major repair fund, so no, not a whole lot of changes here. Eagle Creek does make a $5,000 contribution directly to the repair fund. And the township then takes $40,000 of the money that we get every year and transfers it into the dam major repair fund as well. There was a project budget in here that we didn't get to this year, so I'm carrying it over to next year, which is the demolition and basic restoration of the house that we bought. I don't think any plans for the DDA are intimate down there, but it's really no use to us to continue to have that house. So I'd really like to get rid of it. And even if we just have extra parking or something down there. Yeah, yep.
Okay.
So started talking to our engineer about doing that. Think we'll be able to do that. We won't be doing the demo in-house, but we'll get a bid out and get the project done using our in-house work, so. Any questions about the dam major repair fund? Fund balance, again, we'll be using a little bit of fund balance next year to help fund that that demolition. So pathway fund revenues overall for fiscal year 2023, looking at $660,000 in revenues. The millage rate for the pathway fund, .3468 mils, rolled back from .3475 mils in fiscal year 2022. Looking at expenditures, 2020 and 2021 is when we did most of the expansion work in the township. So fiscal year 2023, we have our big maintenance project that was approved by the township board last month and is currently out for bid right now. So bids are due back on the eighth, and we plan on having a recommendation to the township board on the 14th to move forward. So that's really where majority of the cost for fiscal year 2023 is coming from. Again, we do have one full-time B and G employee that's paid out of here, this transfer to the general fund. No capital outlay, projects are imminent as we focus on our maintenance program. But we'll note that depending on how those bids come back, the general fund may need to contribute funds if the fund balance runs too low. So based on the budget that Eric put together, if it comes in exactly, it would run the fund balance in this fund down to about $72,000. You know, if it comes back better than that, then, you know, that fund balance will be a little bit higher. Just allows us to do more repairs in the future year. If it comes back lower than that, we need, may need to have a general fund contribution to the overall work. Questions about the pathway fund? All right. Infrastructure revolving fund. So the biggest line item in here is our connection fees. It's budgeted at $200,000, but there's years where it's lower than that, it's years that tire than that. It really depends on what projects come in or who connects. It is affected by large projects. So right now, the Edward Rose multifamily project that's going on is 60th and yeah, 60th and the Belt Line has about $600,000 in tap fees outstanding, basically for buildings that they haven't pulled permits for yet. You have all of the commercial that could be built up around there as well. So there's a potential, like this year, we had budgeted $200,000 and it looks like it's going to come in closer to $400,000. We've had years where it's budgeted $200,000 and it comes in at $50,000, so a little bit hard to figure that out. But as far as the expenditures are concerned, biggest expenditure out of here is a continuation of the whole house filter project and the bottled water program. So we're coming up on the year one of that project. So for the whole house filters, I think all the people that want whole house filters, they're in now. Now what comes up is the maintenance, right? So we continue to maintain those whole house filters until the point they get removed. And then we pay to remove them if the residents don't want them after they're connected as well. So got a spreadsheet tracking all of these expenditures. So eventually we will, we will get reversed from the airport for all of these costs. So we've been pretty liberal in what we've done, just making sure that it's all in the spirit of getting those residents clear water. That I mentioned earlier, there is a legal line item in here for the work that Van Essen is doing on our behalf.
Ben, do you, that email that from the resident?
Voicemail?
Yep, voicemail.
Yep, I called them back today.
Okay, thanks. And then did you, or can you communicate with Calligan, whoever, so that they know they don't need to hear from us?
Yeah, I already sent them an email.
Perfect, thank you.
No problem. So the infrastructure revolving fund does have a increasing fund balance as well. So, you know, if at some point the township did want to look at the expansion of water and sewer and other areas or, you know, this is to a lot of the places where the projects where we have a neighborhood that wants to have waters who are extended to their neighborhood but can't afford the upfront costs. You know, this is a lot of times where we partner with them, we pay the whole front upfront costs, but then collect back part of it through Special Assessment District. Most recent example is the Thornapple River Drive extension that we did a couple of years ago. And that extension, we paid outright for the water. We also paid for the sewer, but we're collecting the sewer back over a, I think we did that Special Assessment District for 10 years. So, you know, this is an opportunity for us to help our residents finance infrastructure projects if they, if they need to do it that way.
Your chart is different than our sheet. Our sheet shows a balance of 2,607. We've got 2,623. I don't know what the difference is. Just in case you use that to.
Yeah, I'll figure that out. Yeah, I'll figure that out and have it fixed before the next meeting. So the DDA fund. So this revenue fund looks a little bit different than some of the other ones over the past couple of years. And that is really partially an artifact of the hotel tax tribunal cases that we had over the past couple of years. Fiscal year 2019 is an outlier because we actually had to book the money, the bond that we took out to buy the toughy, toughy building as a revenue. That's also offset by expenditure in the budget as well. So fiscal year 2019 is an outlier, but from 2020 to 2021, significant reduction in revenues because of the tax tribunal cases at the majority of the hotels. And then we're starting to trickle back up again. So for 2023, looking at revenues, $1.3 million. So really, all the taxes from all of the entities are trending up after the decline, again, particularly because of tax tribunals for the hotels. The rent for toughy is trending significantly up due to inflation. For better, for worse, when that lease was signed by the previous building owner, they agreed that after year two, the costs of the rent would increase by the rate of inflation each year, and we know what inflation has done. So it's added a little bit of revenue into the DDA budget as well. Again, interest revenues continue to rebound. So expenditures for the DDA fiscal year 2023, looking to bump up the expenditure budget to $1.2 million with a couple of larger projects and initiatives. So a whole line, full slew of things in here that I think are of note. So transportation services, which currently is a 28th Street bus route. And they cover 100% of that contrast cost right now. However, we've talked about it a couple of times. They have a committee that's working on potential alternative models for public transportation in the DDA area. They specifically asked that the name of this line be changed from 28th Street to Transportation Services. So if they do come up with an alternative model, there's a, still this line item that they can tap into. So we do have a contract services line item, consultant work on the DDA plan and transportation alternatives committee. They sign agreements for both of those with McKenna. So McKenna is coming in and helping them out with those. Again, talked about the DDA administrative transfer out of here into the general fund to cover certain employees. Engineering line item here. Again, there's an opportunity both to either work with Eric on projects in the DDA, potentially smaller projects, or tap into Spalding to Decker if they need potentially more work. Or they could, you know, so there might be big enough specialized projects in the DDA where they may want to issue a engineering or consulting RFP out on their own. And they certainly have the ability to do that as well. They're trying to figure out what those projects would be, so it's just a line item right now. The maintenance repair improvements, it's mostly general repaired improvements in the DDA area. We do have to steal the stamped concrete crosswalks down in the village area. We do that every three years, I believe, and looking to do that next year. Tax tribunal cases are winding down in the DDA. So that's nice that we won't have to put that money back out. I think there's only two or three tax tribunal cases that are still pending right now in the DDA area. Then we got the special projects line item. And again, with the other ones, what kind of parse these all out? So we got DDA lighting and decorations, we got special events, we got PR services, marketing branding materials, flower landscaping project, and again, tactical urbanism and partnership with community, per partnership with the planning department. I need to change that on the.
It's tactical urbanism.
So that's what we talked about, kind of doing testing out a physical project before we actually do it. I gave that example of the crosswalk on the bridge.
How do you test out a bridge before you build it?
What's that?
How do you test out pedestrian halfway over the bridge without building it?
Yeah, right. So one of the things that we thought about, if the, if we move forward with that project, essentially in order to get the pedestrian crossing sides larger, they're going to have to steal width from the travel lanes, right? Because the, the width of the bridge isn't, isn't changing. So talking about this specifically with the DDA, they were worried that that would be a detriment to the vehicle travel. It would make those lanes too small. So one of the things you can do then is in partnership with the road commission, is actually try to dress it up beforehand, right? So you can put bales of hay in certain places that would, and restripe it or do something so that we can actually see how the vehicle traffic goes through there before we make the $500,000 investment and then decide, hey, that was a bad idea, we probably shouldn't have done that. So I was privy to a really good project they did in East Grand Rapids where they did essentially that. They wanted to have some bump outs and some, you know, some safer pedestrian crossings, kind of right outside of their village area. So they did that. They actually designed it with hay bales and then striped it and then asked the residents to give them feedback on whether they liked it or not. So just a good opportunity to, you know, try before you buy, right?
There's no chance of putting a bridge like a camel brick, back bridge? Outside, attached?
No. So we did talk about this with the DDA, and then when it comes in front of the board, we'll talk about it too. So the DDA did want information on that, right? So they wanted to know, could we actually cantilever something off the side of the bridge? Or build a separate pedestrian bridge as well? The problem is that the bridge, the infrastructure holding up the bridge is maxed out. So in order to cantilever something off of it, you're still going to have to make structural changes to the piers and the width beams and all of that. So the road commission pegged it, whether you wanted to cantilever it off the side or you wanted to create an actual separated pedestrian bridge, it was going to be about $2 million aside. So then capital outlay item, a couple of items in here, so Centennial Park lighting. So we're having some issues with the lighting down in Centennial Park, even though it's only 10 years old. So we put some money in here, really need to drill down into what our options are. Because that, as it is now, it's a really expensive project. We think maybe there might be some alternatives, so our township engineer is already looking into that. And then the DDA would like to potentially fund half of this Cascade Road Bridge pedestrian enhancement that we were just talking about. So, you know, they would fund one side, potentially township board fund the other side. We get to that part, I'd like to talk about potentially using ARPA funds to do our side. It's basically $250,000 aside. But what happened is that the raised pedestrian crossway would be shaved down, so it'd be at grade. Then there would be a, if we do one side, it could be 10 feet. If we do two sides, it could be eight feet. We would actually have a barrier between the pedestrian lane and the travel lane. But then that width would be stolen from the five travel lanes. So when they're estimating, the road commission estimates that that could be done, and basically $250,000 aside. Any questions about the DDA? We all know this, but their fund balance continues to creep up. They got about $2.5 million right now. So whatever comes out of this now DDA plan that McKenna is helping them with, there's going to be money there to kickstart those projects. So excited about that. There should be good things coming out of the DDA the next couple of years. Building inspection fund. It's 2022. Obviously, if you look at it, is a pretty good year. We are anticipating the building industry has kind of reached its peak. We're already seeing the project slow down significantly. So anticipating return to potentially some normal revenue levels in 2023. But remember too, that we brought on Plainfield Township in 2022, so that's where some of that increased revenue is coming from. So the revenue line items are all estimated by the building official based on historical trends minus major projects. Again, we implemented the new fee schedule and brought on Plainfield Township in January 2022. We do budget conservatively. We know that there's still potentially some major projects that are coming. Primarily, the Garden Place Apartments, three quarters of that complex, nor the commercial that's potentially planned to ring it are built yet. So there is a lot of potential permit revenue there. There's over 100 houses that are approved through the planning commission in projects in Cascade Township that haven't been built yet. And then we just don't know what's going on in the customer communities.
Question. Building Department, what is the baseline numbers, the, how much money do they have to make to support all the employees, benefits, building? Everything that they have. What is their support? What do they have to make to hold that?
So we budget expenditures at $2.4 million next year.
So they have to make $2.4 million to support everybody.
So the way that it's budgeted next year, yeah. And now there's some, you know, so there's some projects in there, right? So they, we budgeted the other half of the BSMA cloud project there. So, you know, that's something that's not necessarily needed to, to support. You know, but then there's always that, that question as well. So for so for one year, right, if you have a one-year downturn in your building department, you don't want to start cutting building inspectors because they're really hard to get back. You know, you get to a two-year downturn or a three-year downturn, you can't justify just having people sitting around anymore. So if you have a downturn in the building department, you can, you can flux, eventually flux the people there back. The people that we have in the building department right now are, that's set up so that our average inspector does 10 inspections a day. If you got down to where, you know, for a two-year period, your inspectors are doing four inspections a day, you know, it's hard to justify keeping those people around. four inspections a day, you know, it's hard to justify keeping those people around.
Thank you. We were at that point, Timmy, I think, I don't know how many years ago. We had a fund balance and we but we didn't have to work. But now my question is, we got $3.6 million surplus. When we, we've struggled with that for, I don't know, six years, seven years now. And we have decimated on our balance sheet a dollar amount for, I think we call it designated reserves or something for the unfunded liability. How much do you think? I don't know. I'm worried about what's going to happen. The state's got to tell us pretty soon, do something. We, we are limited with what we can do with that six, 3.6. We can't spend it on anything general fund related or restricted, and that keeps growing. What are we going to do?
Can we have legal counsel look at if there's creative ways we can tap that?
Yeah, we certainly can do that. So one of the things that Brian and I are working on is we're going to present to the board, right? So one of the issues we have in the building department is that we collect the fees upfront, right? So you collect the fee upfront and then you have to do the inspection afterwards, right? So one of the things that we would like to earmark every year in the building fund is the open book of permits, right? So basically the fee that we've collected for permits that haven't been closed yet. Because the idea behind that is if you decided on December 30th, 2022, that you weren't going to have your, you weren't going to accept any more permits yet. There's this still open book of permits that you have to inspect based on the money that you already brought in. So what we want to do is give the board an idea of, okay, this is the amount of money that we have sitting in the fund that hasn't been used to actually do the work yet. I think it's not going to be $3.6 million, but it's going to be, it's going to be a seven-figure number. So I think that'll probably make us feel a little bit better about the fund balance. But yeah, I mean, even if the building, if the building industry stays steady, we're probably going to start seeing that fund balance creep up even more.
It's hard not to be able to, we're a public entity and we can't really see the benefit.
Yeah, I had brought that up where should be like an escrow account. It's not our money until it's closed out. But we took the money from the inspection, but we haven't done the inspection yet. That money should be in a separate account until it's closed. I think the net effect it's just when you're realizing the income, but I think that balance. I mean, I, I could tell you, we struggled with it for years and we've asked the accountant what we can do and we can designate some of it for our unfunded pension liability, which we have done. But I don't know how many people in the building department are retiring or, or what our liability is to those folks versus some other department. But yeah, maybe, maybe Foster Swift has got an idea. Because we, I think we, we kind of, we got to do something with that money.
It draws attention if nothing else.
It does, and we allocated, that's why 40, what was it, 40% of the cost of the township hall?
So it was a split based on square footage and it came almost to 33%. So it was like 32.9% or something like that.
But because it was related, the building occupying the building, but still look at 3.6 million.
It encourages sloppiness and inefficiency too. And the problem is, how are we going to, we got too much money. We don't know what to do with it.
Yes, I could ask Foster Swift about that.
The uniform section, it's not very much, but I thought I saw in the months of recent months, there were still some uniform expenses coming out of the building department.
No uniforms coming out of the building department anymore.
Okay, so does Brian understand that those are not, those are not uniforms legally?
Yeah, you'll see it zeroed out for next year.
Yeah.
Any questions about the building department?
Yes, but not right now.
All right. So you know, there is, you know, one of those things to, to get back to what trustee Kessel was saying. I don't think we're ever going to get the state to come down on us about carrying the fund balance. I think one of the things that we should be worried about is our, our partner communities, right? So you know, we're servicing other communities as well. You know, they're not going to look kindly upon us continuing to accumulate fund balance without a purpose for it, right? So you know, one of the things that if we needed to continue to keep that fund balance bound is we could just, we could change the amount of money that goes to the customer communities. Right now we give back 20%, you know, we could look at 25% or 30% or something like that.
But we're already cheap compared to what they could do if they did a private business. So basically we're giving them huge benefit.
Yeah, we're overly efficient.
Yeah, well, yeah, we just have but I wonder if we did a time study, that kind of efficiency would be there.
I mean, the nice thing about the building department is we have the measurables, right? So we know how many inspections each inspector is doing each day. And the average needs to be 10, right? If you're, if you're getting 10 inspections done in an eight-hour day, especially because we travel to a bunch of different places. You know, you're, you're being efficient with your inspections.
Yeah, let's see if Foster Swift can come up. I don't suppose we could turn that into like preserving green space, but let's pay them extra if they do figure out how to do that.
One of the most honest things, as Ben said, is give it back to, to the communities.
Yeah, but I don't want to do that either because we're the ones, we're already giving them a steal and we're not getting a like, where's the benefit? We take all the risk, which I understand so far the risk has not actually you know, come out or we haven't actually, but we take all the risk, we provide cheap, excellent services way better than they get. And we just get the same 20% that they do.
What do we do? What do they charge? What do we charge them for administrative costs?
Comes out of that 20%.
And so their admin, like we get the exact same benefit that they do, even though we take on all the responsibility and give way better service than what they could get as far as price and
We charge them 20%?
We get 20% back of all of the, the fees that are collected.
I mean, we as the township, the administrator fees, the Arcana's time, Katie's time, your time.
Comes out of that 20%.
And in theory, we're just assuming, giving them the benefit of the doubt that they actually have 20%, you know, they get that 20% but
Square footage is 32%.
Yeah, exactly. And
But they pay like, so they pay 32% of the heating bills, they pay 32% of the internet bills. You have to remember, even the 20% that we get back, we still have to tie that back to building department services. So even though Ada Township doesn't have a building department, they have to tie back the money that they get to things related to the building department. They've developed the fund balance. Grand Rapids Township has had the same problem. They've developed the fund balance. So you have to make sure that you're justifying even the 20% that's going back to the communities, that they're using that on things related to the, the building department.
So they may have inflated balances too then, right?
But so we give them more. No, but they get to actually, while their inflated balance goes to, sorry, at the township, but like, I don't know, I feel like we're, we're the ones assuming like we have actual costs because we're issuing all the permits and stuff. They just, they don't have to do any of the work.
Right, we have the cost, the management, the talent to do it all. We just have to figure out a way, how come we
To get the benefit.
Money, yeah.
Well, then let's eliminate all building fees for our residents.
Yes, exactly, John. Except make it harder for outside developers.
I brought this up before, but I think there was a question, so whether that we can legally do that.
Like where's, there's got to be
I would love to be able to tell Sue, you want to put an extension on your house, there's no building, there's no inspection fees.
It's like deer licenses are way cheaper for in-state than out-of-state. There should be some perk. Yes, there's, I don't see the perk that we don't get any more perk than all the other townships who then, you know, receive the same service.
You got my two cents worth.
I got, I agree. I got four cents on with your two.
And we raised the fees, we approved the raising of the, the fees we charge.
Yes, we did. Brian was here.
I mean, if we're going to assume the risk and also it's technically a public, it's a public business. So then they benefit from the public aspects of it. Just seems like there should be some yeah, other than, otherwise let's just pay some other sap 20%. Not that we would do that because we have a great department, good people, but this doesn't quite make sense. It's really weird.
We could figure out what percentage of the fees that we collect in that budget come from Cascade residents. And like John said, if we did it for free for our residents, what would that mean income wise?
Well, Brian sends that report every month or two of what portion is Cascade, what portion
In the last
By month.
Can we charge them more for overhead? Because in theory, they're on the other side of the buildings, so they have to walk farther. Everything's a little farther for all of our admin. Just trying to think of legitimate. Like, yeah, and their side's pretty big and it looks a little bit fancier.
We got criticized, well, we got it looked at, I won't say criticized because we charged the 1%. And we had to justify 1% of everything going to the building department.
Who criticized us?
I think we had an audit one year, maybe it was a underford or it was before a current auditing firm, but
There's one guy that calls kind of every year to ask him about it.
Who's that? A citizen?
The guy that calls you about the admin fee?
1%?
Yeah, I get that every year.
I'll do some research.
Yeah, can you, can you have Foster Swift kind of write down what our parameters are so that, sorry guys, so we can figure out how to max those out?
I mean, the parameters are easy, so it's written right into the state construction code. So we can pull that out. I think it's just figuring out what matches the language of the code.
Even if you gave Cascade residents, say, a 50% discount. What would that look like?
Yeah, I think we ought to look at those options.
There's got to be some incentive.
Resident incentive. Residents who live here, not necessarily you want to develop here if you're
Correct.
No, residents who live here, not like this or
Sleep here, no.
Right.
It's the correct
So I will say that all of our agreements with the other communities says specifically that they will adopt our fee schedule. So if we were to lower fees for Cascade residents, automatically all of the other communities have to adopt
Now you tell them. Well, can we modify our fee schedule so that we have a resident, non-resident difference?
There you go.
We'll change the law.
It's either change it or ignore it. One of the two. Figure it out then.
Sounds like this is for another meeting.
Yeah, to be determined. On that note.
Library.
On that note, the library.
Wait, can we stay off topic for just one second? No, really quick though, infrastructure, I didn't mention it earlier with water and sewer from discussions with the planning commission and, and you, how part of that agricultural future industrial area behind the airport is right now is designated as a priority for where we want water and sewer to be installed. And that's also what they're, you know, all the, so if we need to de-prioritize that to be consistent and, and as well as looking at our master plan.
Yes, I will say it's not a prioritization, but so the conversation that we're having is there's two different maps for our relationship with the city of Grand Rapids when it comes to water sewer service. You have the utility. I'm going to butcher, butcher these names, but there are two of them. One of them is the utility availability district, basically. That's our whole township, right? So every community that's in there, for the most part, has their, their whole area is a, is someplace potentially that services could be applied to. Then we have the, another map, it's utility service boundary. And right now that's the section where utilities at the current time can be extended to. Right now for water and sewer service, our utility boundary in that section of the township is M6, right? So there's a potential, if we didn't want to those other properties to have utilities extended to them, we could just potentially remove them out of that map.
Which is how you do proactive community planning. We should do that.
So I'm still trying to figure out the details because our, our agreement only calls for adding stuff to the map. It doesn't call for taking it out. But I know at least two times in the past, before I was here, we had property taken out of it. So there is a mechanism to do it. I just need to get back into it and look at it. Library Fund. So fiscal year 2023, revenues up to $340,000. So our millage rate for the library is 0.1479 mils, rolled back from 0.1482 mils in 2022. And see, big expenditure for fiscal year 2023, and that's related to the plan that we've had for the library refresh project. So the plan is for myself and Lulu and Eric to come back to the board in early 2023 to kind of repitch that project now that we had the public input. And it got waylaid a little bit with Vanessa leaving and bringing Eric on. So we had hoped to have that in front of the board earlier this fall. But now we will get it to you guys, but we've been saving up money for that, about $1.5 million for the refresh project. Which would bring the fund balance down to about $830,000. And then, as I mentioned earlier, the library millage is, the last year we'll collect it is 2023 for the 2024 budget. And we'll start, have to start having conversations about what a potential library millage renewal looks like. You know, do we like that millage rate the way it is? We have further plans for this building, so we'll have to have those conversations throughout 2023.
Question. Were you talking about Vanessa leaving?
Vanessa left. She went to the city of Holland as their materials director, I think.
Know that.
So Lulu came to the township meeting to do the, the presentation. I think she mentioned that.
You know, it hurts. Okay, well, she was talking fast, so I missed.
So the nice thing about the, the setup that they had, right? So it used to be each library had their individual manager. And when you had somebody left, you basically brought in somebody brand new to do it. Now what they do is they, they partner, so each two sets of two libraries. For us, it's the Cascade Library and the Caledonia Library has, I don't think these are the real titles, but I'm calling the senior manager and the junior manager. So when the senior manager leaves, the junior manager isn't guaranteed the job, but at least it's somebody that has institutional knowledge. In our case, Lulu did get the promotion. And then they just hired their junior manager, who I think is a employee that came from this branch, so. Any questions about the library fund? All right, so we got a couple of fund budgets that still need to be developed. Larry Way Lake and Thornapple River SAD should be fine. I do need to have a final conversation with the Larry Way Lake SAD group early next week in order to get that one finalized. The ones that I really wanted some direction from you guys tonight. So the fire station construction fund, we need the final mix of where the additional money is going to come from there. Recall that the conversation that we had was general fund and the ARPA fund. And then for the ARPA fund, we need to talk about if there's any projects that we want to budget out of there. Again, related to the fire fund, we want to apply some of that money. Then we talked about the Cascade Road pedestrian bridge. My thought is that that project would certainly be in the spirit of the ARPA funds. You know, it's supposed to be something to benefit the community. We do have to allocate those funds by 2024, spend them by 2026. We got about $2.1 million in there. That project's about $250,000. I thought it would be a good fund to allocate that project into.
Somebody's going to ask about cable TV or internet service. ARPA is not for that, correct?
So ARPA can be for that, but there are other entities working on it as well. So Kent County is allocating part of their ARPA funds for cable. They're trying to look at it holistically, right? So the state is allocating funds. The state funds had to be applied for by companies. So we're talking to Comcast to apply for those funds directly for that neighborhood as well. The township could make the decision to say, hey, yep, we're going to spend $250,000 of our own ARPA funds to extend cable to these communities. There's nothing stopping us from doing that, but there are some other There's nothing stopping us from doing that, but there are some other potential avenues for us to look at as well.
As long as we have good answers. Thanks.
I did hear the lieutenant governor say that they are going to try to get internet to every home in the state. But you have to be on the map showing that you don't have it.
Yep.
Is that neighborhood on the map?
It is. I have contacted the county twice to make sure it shows up on their map. I contacted the state once in person and once by email to make sure it shows up on their map.
Okay.
So part of the problem, the way they explained it, right, and this is very antiquated, and I didn't realize this. But the way that internet coverage maps used to work is they went by census district. And if you had one house in a census district that had access to high-speed internet, the state considered that district covered. Which is why you have people touting, you know, hey, we've got this great internet coverage. Well, if you had one house in the census district of two thousand houses that had internet, they were considered covered. So the new mapping they're doing is doing it house by house, neighborhood by neighborhood, to figure out who actually has it, who doesn't.
We're good.
We're good.
What is the exact amount we have to cover now?
For the fire station?
Yep.
Four million dollars. I mean, that's not exact, it's probably a little bit less than four million dollars, but I'm saying four million dollars.
Eleven million total, wasn't it?
Just ten million and some change, but we fronted some of that money as we were going through the development process.
We found it six or six point five?
We found it six.
Fire department benefits of the building department.
I was just gonna say that, seems like a pretty direct correlation to me. Yep, let's suck it two and two, there we go.
Direction from burning down.
Although that does mess up our village, but whatever, let's just go for it.
I don't think we can do that.
Treasure appears, but when you do. And if they're asking you for ideas, that could come up.
All right.
If you make it happen, Ben.
I, I, I don't think we're gonna get that, but if we can, that would solve a problem.
Yeah, so do you also do a plan B?
Plan B would be nice, or if you wanna call it plan C or plan D, that's fine too.
I think. Taking three million dollars of the four out of our general fund. And a million dollars of the two point one of the ARPA fund is an option. If you look at our general fund balance projected at the end of next year, we'd still have four point six million. And I think that's a good amount. The other option, if you didn't feel comfortable with that, would be to take three and a half. And leave our general fund at four point one and take a half a million of the ARPA fund. But I don't know what we'd use the other million and a half ARPA funds for.
So quite honestly, you can use the ARPA funds and the general fund money for the same thing. So we're really just kind of talking semantics at this point. I agree with you, four point six or four point one million dollars is probably a good amount to have in, in the general fund. Especially considering that, you know, this year, our drawdown of the general fund is only a hundred thousand dollars. But we have nearly five hundred thousand dollars in capital improvements in there. We've got another probably two hundred to three hundred thousand dollars in one-time expenditures. So I don't foresee us having fund balance issues in the general fund going forward. In fact, in years where we have limited capital improvements in the general fund, we'll probably start building that up again. So I'd be comfortable with either of those suggestions. Quite honestly, I'd be comfortable if you guys just said take off four million dollars out of the general fund as well. It just hearkens back to the fact that when I'm standing up here in front of you next year. We have to have a commitment for what we're gonna spend those ARPA funds on, the state requires a commitment by the end of two thousand twenty-four.
Do you need anything but for this budget at the end of the?
Yeah, so in this budget, you know, so we're building the fire station next year, I gotta figure out where those extra funds are coming from. It'll just be a fund transfer, however it happens, but I wanna have that in the budget when it gets approved on the fourteenth.
Doesn't it make more sense though to take more out of the ARPA funds for the fire department since we know that's a, that's a legitimate use of the fund?
So from a financial perspective, that makes sense, you know, a lot of it is transparency, right? So, you know, you might get somebody from the public that say, hey, you got this money that you were supposed to spend on something that. You know, generally benefits the township and you spent it on something you're gonna spend money on anyways. But from a financial legal perspective, it probably makes sense to.
How much more benefit? What is more beneficial than our first responders and our fire?
I'm just playing devil's advocate.
I understand.
But then we can still look into recouping costs from the several businesses that aren't being good neighbors that are sucking our resources. In a positive way.
Is our P funds problem gone?
No.
We use some of their money for that.
No, cause we're gonna get it from the airport. Yeah. For sure is sure can be in government likely.
Well, since you're playing devil's advocate.
That would be taking resident money when the air, when the person, when the polluter should be paying ultimately and liability wise.
I agree.
Liability wise though.
I, I would think that.
It bet on us.
To be clean and utilize it properly and promptly, probably the fire station should, should be utilized for it.
I mean, ARPA funds utilized for that, yeah. I think so too, because you also look at, we, we came up with, you know, this, this unexpected. Perfect storm of COVID, supply chain issues, you know, inflation due to a myriad of problems. Including worldwide problems, your favorite topic, John, Russia, Ukraine. But I mean, it contributed to, to increasing costs of our fire station that we, nobody in the planet anticipated. I mean, we were going from seven to eight million to ten, eleven million. So, you know, the ARPA funds using it for the fire station makes just a lot of sense.
You know, the fire station project is a lot farther along now than. And I'm a big pusher for the Cascade Road pedestrian bridge, but there's still work to be done on that.
Right, but we could, we could use it for both, we could use it for the pedestrian bridge and the fire station. And those are two big benefits for the whole community.
Well, we remember through the years, we built that general fund purposely because we knew. We were gonna build a new fire station and the township hall, we got the township hall at a lot less than. I, I don't know about. You know, what we would use the ARPA funds for. I guess, you know, I, I, I like the idea still of taking three to three and a half million out of the general fund. And the rest of the ARPA, but if we don't have any idea, I mean, if they don't come through with internet. You know, just say they don't, or they delay it for who knows how long, we could use the ARPA funds for that.
On, on the same token though, we've got some millages that are coming up for renewal the next couple of years. And we don't know whether or not we're gonna get those renewed, and if we have a nice, healthy general fund in reserve. I would feel safer having that.
All good points.
Yeah.
I would, and I'm not advocating for this, I totally agree with the, we could do it for the fire station. I wouldn't have a problem looking for, as far as ARPA funds, but I'm biased, but as far as our strategic plan preserving and. Enhancing parks and green space, because there's limited property available. Having said that, that's a bigger, you know, more, that's a biased position, so I'm all for the firefighter, fire station. I just could easily think of something we could do with it too.
But, but, but if we use the ARPA funds for the fire station, which is a legitimate expense.
They are still there in the general.
There's in the general fund we could use for open space.
Yeah, no.
I guess I would hearken back to Jim's comment, right? So while you can use the ARPA funds for really anything. For ninety-five percent of the stuff you'd spend general fund money on, there's probably things you can use ARPA fund money that I wouldn't recommend spending general fund money on. Again, it's not appropriate to spend general fund money on extending internet service to residents. Whereas if you use ARPA funds to do that, that's a legitimate expense there. So I think there is some benefit to, in the short term, leaving some money in the ARPA fund as we go through this next year. But if for some reason we don't come up with anything in, you know, in the next twelve months. At the end of next year, you at least have to commit it for something, so, you know, so we could say we use the initial suggestion, say. Three million dollars from the general fund, one million dollars from the ARPA fund. We got two hundred and fifty thousand dollars going towards a pedestrian bridge, there are seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars left in there. We could get to the end of two thousand and twenty-four and say, well, we need to commit it, we'll commit it for the purchase of open space. Then you can do that and that solves your two thousand twenty-four problem, then the only problem is you have to buy that open space by the end of two thousand twenty-six. So it's just kind of rolling deadlines that way, but I do see the wisdom in leaving some money in the ARPA fund. For some of those things that we could potentially spend it on, that the general fund isn't necessarily a good use of funds.
I think you just kind of summarized the, the amount.
So we're comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Come back with a budget that has that in it?
Sounds great.
All right, you guys got about ten more minutes for me?
Yep.
All right.
Let me make a quick phone call, really quick.
Yeah, that's fine.
I'm sorry, just super quick. You can have to stop. Roll it.
Means our next meeting will be two hours.
Are you sure you want me to keep going? Okay. So just finish up talking about wages and benefits, right? So we have three types of increases that are given to employees in the township. We have our cost of living increases, these are general increases, they're applied unilaterally to the employees. As long as they get a non-negative performance review, and it's also subsequently played to our, applied to our pay grade step scales. So we have our defined step increases, these are step pays for employees, typically our newer employees. That haven't yet reached the open step for their position, and those are contingent upon a positive performance evaluation. And then we have a merit pay increase, so increases in pay for employees and the open range for position. Awarded for bringing some kind of value added for it to the township, so those are reserved for our, our, our top performers. So overall increased wage and compensation, so we've always tied this, the combination of those three. So the cost of living increase, the step increases and the merit-based increases. Have tied it to the increase in real property tax-related revenues for the township. And that, as you saw, as we went through the processes here, is five point eight six percent. So this is one that I really wanted to talk about, because it's a little bit hard for our employees to understand. Because we're dealing with such high inflationary measures, right? So cost of living and wage increase, you know, a lot of people just refer that to inflationary increase. This year, our policy sets that increase at three point three percent. Even though this year in terms of inflation, we're seeing inflation seven, eight, nine percent, so why is that? So our CPI that we use is reflective of. It's two years and arrears, right? So when we look at the number we use, we use the CPI number on December thirtieth of two thousand twenty-one. Which sets the tax rule for two thousand and twenty-two, which then sets, is used to fund the budget for two thousand twenty-three. So every year, our cost of living wage increases are basically two years in arrears. So for example, the CPI for the end of this year has already been set by the state government. It's seven point nine percent, it's actually technically capped at five percent, because Headley doesn't allow us to apply anything higher than five percent. At. On the taxable values, so the question I had is that, are we comfortable with this? Three point three cost of living wage increase? Or do we want to take some of next year's CPI increase, which will be five percent, or the recommendation will be five percent? And kind of mesh them together to possibly front load that CPI increase for the employees.
I got a question, when you look at the expenses of healthcare and everything else. What percentage of increase will be passed on the employees?
So the healthcare amount went up four point nine percent this year, so for the. The, the monthly cost, right? So that basically is divided up equally, so the part the township goes up four point nine percent, the part the employees go up four point nine percent. But the other half of that is the deductible as well, right? So the township has a policy that we fund everybody's HSA or HRA at the rate of a single deductible. And that went up a hundred dollars as well, so it was fourteen hundred dollars last year. The township will pay fifteen hundred dollars per employee this year to fund the HSA and the HRA. But the healthcare portion of it went up four point nine percent.
Last year, what did it go up?
One point something percent.
We had three point three last year with the one percent increase in healthcare.
No, last year's cost of living increase was one point four percent.
We could do four percent this year.
So I mean, the, again, based on our policy, the raise is coming no matter what, right? So, you know, if we just say, hey, we're just gonna stick to chalk and we're gonna go with the policy. The cost of living increases based on the policy would be three point three percent this year and five percent next year. I'd really like to potentially do some meshing of that, you know, if we do.
About four percent this year.
Four percent this year and the rest next year, just to tell the employees, hey, we recognize that. Our inflationary measures are two years in arrears, we're trying to, trying to catch up accordingly.
There's, there's a couple of things, not only that, but I think that the workforce out there has been more difficult to retain the good quality people.
Sure, you're right.
And I would, I would wholeheartedly support you, Ben, if you wanted to front load that from next year's expectations. I think it's only right and morally correct.
So the assignable expense that you have in the budget is above and beyond that four percent, right?
Correct, yep, and there's a good chance every year, we don't end up using all of that assignable, so. You know, there's a good chance it'll still stick in that five point eight six percent, but we do have some positions that we need to continue. You know, last year we had some positions on the lower end of the scale that we accelerated. We need to do that more, those positions are getting really, really hard to fill. And we wanna make sure that we're keeping the qualified talent that we spent so much time attracting this past year.
For four and a half, whatever, cause John is right. You know, we, people can go flip burgers at Freddy's and make twenty-some bucks an hour. And we're having people, we have that same problem of retainage, and we don't wanna lose employees.
Do you remember your recommending, Ben?
What's that?
Do you have a number you're recommending?
I'd go heavier than lighter.
A number that I'm recommending?
CPI for the entries.
I think four, I think four percent would be good, you know, if we, if we read four percent this year and then mesh the two, do four percent this year and the rest of whatever it is next year. I think that would, that would behoove, that would be good. And again, John, right, so to be clear, that's just the baseline raise that we applied to the scale. Employees are eligible for those merit-based raises as well, for some of those employees that are doing a great job, that we really need to, you know, work to maintain. I have that ability to assign some of that assignment.
This evening, we talked about some of the challenges in buildings and grounds, personnel, and I know the fire department is. Those guys work for two or three different departments and it's snap of a finger that could be done.
Yeah.
Okay, whatever you're comfortable with.
All right.
Move away to Germany.
Public comment.
I think we're, yeah, as far as the stuff, cause we already covered the benefits of dental stayed the same. Pensions are fine, just in case you're wondering, we have fifteen employees that are still in the DB plan, continuing to wind that down. Talked about the HSA, HRSA going up a hundred bucks.
Fantastic.
So I promise next Tuesday, lot shorter.
That is good.
I'll basically just talk about whatever you wanted, the big change next week is going to be the clerk treasurer. Manager supervisor changes, so I'll spend a little bit of time explaining where all that went, the rest of it should be. Yeah, yep.
Yeah, is there anyone on virtual, next public comment, is there anyone virtually?
They're sleeping, if they are.
It's a good time, unlimited time right now. Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make motion for German.
It's a motion by trustee Shipley and I assume supported by treasurer Pierce to adjourn. All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed?
Hey.
Good job, we got a lot of good stuff done.
Lot of fun stuff to work on next year, it's nice having big projects in the budget.
Is it next week that, that Larry Way Lake meets?
So.